Evening everyone, welcome to the Carson City School District Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 14, 2025. And we are going to call this board meeting to order at 5:45 PM. Agenda item number one, adoption of the agenda as submitted, and this is for possible action. Okay, motion by trustee Wal, and second by trustee Wagner, excuse me. Any board discussion? See none. Any public comment? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number two, adjournment to closed session per NRS 288.220 to discuss labor relations with the district management representatives, and this is for discussion. Thank you.
The example he gave was wear mismatched socks all day and act surprised when people point it out all day long. And so one of the cards they had was have one of your administrators come and sub for half of one of your classes. And so if you know Ty McMillan, Ty is an amazing human being, super positive. He's a science teacher at Carson High School. He pulled one of those chance cards, and he got an admin, Mr. Carson, to come and sub for his class for half the day, and with that half-day, decided to head over to Silver Campus to spend some time supporting one of our new science teacher over there, just voluntarily didn't have to do it, just a class act.
It is 6:30 PM and we're going to reconvene to our public session. It's agenda item number three. And before I go on to agenda item number four, I need to inform everyone that trustee Clapton is absent today and trustee Walker is joining us on the phone. So, agenda item number four, I'm going to ask trustee Walker if you can please lead us for the flag salute. Thank you trustee Walker. Agenda item number five, superintendent's report, and this is for information only. Superintendent Feeling?
Thank you, President Ramirez. It is hard to believe, but we are three days away from the end of the first quarter. Which is pretty amazing. First thing, I just wanted to give a thanks to the Carson City Schools Foundation. They have recently awarded just over $9,000 in grants to many of our staff members for various projects, and so this is something they've been doing for years now and just really appreciate them giving our staff with some neat ideas for things to do for kids, some funds to make that happen. Wanted just to share a couple stories. Some of our incredible folks in our schools. I'll start with Carson High. So Carson High this year, Mr. Carson's has started a... At his staff meetings, they're handing out chance cards. So if you've played Monopoly, you have to draw a chance card sometimes and you don't really know what's coming with that. And so sometimes it's... The example he gave was wear mismatched socks all day and act surprised when people point it out all day long. And so, one of the cards they had was have one of your administrators come and sub for half of one of your classes. And so, if you know Ty McMillan, Ty is an amazing human being, super positive. He's a science teacher at Carson High School. He pulled one of those chance cards and he got an admin, Mr. Carson's, to come and sub for his class for half the day. And with that half day, decided to head over to Silver Campus to spend some time supporting one of our new science teacher over there, just voluntarily didn't have to do it. Just a class act, so wanted to recognize that. Julie Clankie over at Mark Twain Elementary School. Just an incredible team player for our kids, period. Someone who, you don't ask what she does, but it's more what she doesn't do in that building, trying to support as a special ed para-professional over there. And just doing great things for kids. Over at Fremont Elementary, our kindergarten teacher, Amanda Bodenstein, a fountain of positivity and creativeness in her classrooms, has also done a lot for the staff over there. She's worked out with Starbucks to have four times a year bring over like a coffee event for staff. So caffeine makes people happy and so she is doing great things.
Especially as it gets colder.
As it gets colder, yeah. Over at Fritsch Elementary School, the amazing kitchen staff led by the amazing Cherie Carter. Had some new menu items that they have been working hard to figure out as they cook so much of this from scratch. Chicken dumplings with sesame green beans and some new chicken Alfredo dish that apparently is getting them a Michelin star rating because it is so good. And they have been now serving some walking tacos that, as Mr. Brown has said, has gotten them a five-star rating on Yelp. So that was pretty impressive. And then just a shout out to the staff, the office staff over at Eagle Valley Elementary School, Eagle Valley Elementary, Eagle Valley Middle School. Jessica, Ms. Nendy, and Jamie Page, just doing everything they can to keep things moving in that office, keeping it positive, supporting our new principal over there. And she has a lot of thanks to them for all the work that they do. And finally, Brenda Ramirez, who's at Carson High School. A personal thank you from me. At the Douglas football game last Friday, if you didn't hear, we won. Just throwing that out there in overtime. Exciting. First play for Douglas on offense, they threw a pass that I thought was going to get intercepted. And as I'm rising from my seat in excitement as I think it's going to be intercepted, I dropped my phone through the bleachers. And as I'm running around trying to figure out how to get under there, I realized that I can't. And Brenda voluntarily dives under the bleachers and army crawls for probably what seemed like a mile to get my phone for me and I think dislocated her arm to try to reach through the bleachers to get it to me. So just a big, big thank you to Brenda Ramirez. And that is all I have tonight.
That's awesome. Great, thank you. Agenda item number six, board reports, board member comments, and this is for information only. And I would like to invite our student representatives for Carson High and for Carson High Silver Campus. Welcome Maggie and Cooper.
Hello, members of the board. Good evening. This is, I'm Cooper Feeling, your Carson High School student body representative. All right, just a couple of things to go over tonight. So a few weeks ago, we had our homecoming week. It was very successful. We had lots of people participating in all of the dress up days and we got some really good social media posts out of that and just a lot of student engagement. The homecoming court was also, they were very involved the whole week. Our winners, they would have loved to be here today except, so their homecoming king was Kayden Coleman and our homecoming queen was Gloria Dooley. And Kayden had worked tonight and Gloria had a soccer game, but they both were trying to be here. We also won that football game, 49 to 6 against Hug. And then on Saturday, we had the homecoming dance, which was also very successful. I think we had about seven or eight hundred tickets sold, so there was a lot of people there. And then last Friday, October 10th, we, Varsity Football beat Douglas at Douglas to reclaim the rivalry trophy for the first time. We haven't had it since, I think like three years, so that's a really great thing. And they are a very good team and we were in overtime too. It was a great game. And then yesterday, October 13th, we celebrated student council at the high school main campus, celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day by giving out free popcorn to the student body at lunch.
Perfect, thank you Maggie.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, those here and not. My name is Maggie and I'll be sharing Silver Campus' announcements this evening. First things first, our Carson High Speech and Debate Team is going to compete at Worcester High School in Reno this weekend on the 17th and 18th. We are always in need of judges, so if you'd like to donate your time, please reach out to Ms. Jillian Shufel about signing up. Please join us in wishing the team good luck. During the week of, during the week of September 29th through October 3rd, we participated in Homecoming Week as well as the Week of Respect. And I'm very happy to report that the students and staff dressed up throughout the week, which ended on Saturday the 4th with a Western theme homecoming. Silver Campus is hosting Silver Power Hour, also known as Tutoring, today and Thursday from 2:15 to 3:45 PM. The students will get targeted help for their academic needs and we're all excited to see the outcome of the first quarter ending on Friday. On October 22nd, the Silver Campus will be hosting their first ever Silver Campus JAG Initiation and Installation Ceremony during school from 10:50 to 11:40 AM. We are super excited to swear new officers and initiate all of our JAG students. This concludes the announcements for the Silver Campus. Have a wonderful rest of your evening. This is Maggie signing off.
Thank you both so much. We appreciate you guys' report. All right, Nevada Association of School Board, NASB update. Trustee Burner?
Yeah, I don't have much tonight, but I can tell you that last evening, the awards committee finished up reviewing all the nomination letters. And I think you asked last time how many letters we'd received? It was 98.
Wow.
Plus or minus one nomination letters, yeah. Yeah, so it was, it took a while to get through them, but the final decisions were made, so those will be coming out on the conference upcoming.
A lot of people acknowledge, that's good, but a lot of work for you guys. Well, thank you for all those hours that you put into helping out with that. All right. Mike, do you have anything else that you want to add?
Yeah, actually, this last weekend, I attended the Pacific Region Meeting with colleagues from Nevada, Utah, Alaska, Washington, Oregon, and really just talked about the issues facing our school districts and in districts, big and small, states, urban and rural, we're all kind of facing the same things. So it was nice to kind of hear what other states are doing and just collaborate with our colleagues. And we are planning the conference and getting ready for that, so December is coming quickly.
Awesome, thank you Mike.
You're welcome.
All righty. Board announcements, Michelle?
Starting off with Carson High, as AJ had mentioned, the Carson City Schools Foundation awarded several grants. Seven of those were awarded at Carson High, so we'll be going around to those classrooms and presenting the checks to the teachers in front of the classes so that they can all be celebrated together for that, so I'm looking forward to that tomorrow. Let's see, this Friday, if you want to support Safe Grad, that's the committee that puts together the after graduation celebration to keep kids in a good, sober, safe environment. This Friday, we're having a Panda Express fundraiser where if you go to their Facebook page, which is just Safe, or Carson Safe Grad, three separate words, you'll see the flyer or the online code if you order through the app. And then 50% of yourselves will go to support that. We've also, as is mentioned for the third time, but it's worth mentioning a third time, we kicked Douglas' butt in overtime, 21-14, so that was a very fun one and it's always extra fun to do it on their turf. We beat them at home, at their home.
At their home.
And then tennis is in regionals this week, trying to be in regionals this week, but we keep getting rained out, so that's hosted up at Monogue. And for tennis, the team as a whole gets ranked and seeded, they're 11 in the division and we just missed, we tied for sixth in the top six go, but the team that beat us was our, we were tied with them and so they got to go as a team, so we didn't get to go as a team. But you also get ranked as individual players and we had two of our singles players and two of our doubles players that made it in as individual ranked players. And so their individual regionals are this week hosted up at Monogue. And if we could just get it to stop raining, we would play those games and see how we do, but we're excited for the kids that have that opportunity. Also at Carson High, the bowling team officially kicks off tomorrow, so if you have any kids that would like a temperature-controlled sport where you don't have to worry about the rain or sunblock, the bowling team is always recruiting and we're at Homegrown Bowl on the south end of town and we practice every Monday and Tuesday from 3 to 5, so come join, get your kids in with us. Oh, and I was going to say before they ran off, but maybe he'll hear it on this, if not dad can pass it along, Cooper had mentioned, as a part of student council, working really hard during Homecoming Week to have a strong social media presence and I was just going to compliment him, they do a fantastic job. If you don't follow Carson High Student Council on Instagram, they are such a strong presence and they post constantly, so you always know what's going on and you stay in the loop and makes it really easy to be a part of school spirit and they're doing a fantastic job keeping that hopping. So that's all I have for Carson High. Mark Twain Elementary, I'm just going to read some of the notes I got from Ms. Corrects there. She says, "Mark Twain is working hard with our new reading program, KCLA implementation. Teachers are really liking the curriculum resource. It has allowed us to understand our students' reading pathway in depth. We also had a very successful fall carnival. Many of our families attended and we all had a great time. This week, we also have several classes on the road for some exciting field trips. Fifth grade is going to go up to Kids Court. It's a mock trial experience at the Washoe County Courthouse. Preschool is going out to Andaline Farms for their farm unit. They're going to spend some time with the animals out there. And then the fourth grade is going to the Nevada State Museum as a part of their Nevada History Unit." So lots of moving around and getting out in the community. She also says, "We're busy getting ready for our fall parent teacher conferences that we're excited to meet with our families and they typically have about a 98% attendance rate at those parent teacher conferences." So a big high five to Mark Twain for making that a priority and for the families for supporting it.
Awesome, Michelle, that's a lot, thank you. All right, Rebecca?
Yes, for Fremont from Dr. Ward. Hello, by the way, thanks for being here. And parent teacher conferences starting in October 27th and they're looking to get 100%. So let's go, parents! And then many teachers have extended conference times to accommodate all parents, so thank you from Dr. Ward to all those parents, or to all those teachers to help support our families. And then also congratulations to Terry Schiffer and Muriel Maiden, they were foundation winners and Terry is also a grant winner of the DKG Grant, so congratulations to those teachers.
Wonderful, thank you Rebecca. Richard?
Yes, for Fritsch, Mr. Brown, Principal Brown wanted to share with all the Fritsch families that they're getting very excited for the parent teachers conferences, which are upcoming. And he wanted to remind all parents to make sure to schedule a meeting with their child's teacher. And that's it for Fritsch, but I do have one more.
Okay.
A couple more, actually. If I can find it here. And this is from Principal Riquetta from Borbuk Bray. Parent teachers conferences are being held October 27th through the 30th. Remind everybody and mark their calendars for the upcoming multicultural night on November 19th, which is hosted by the House of Armistat, which I happen to be a member of. It will be from 5:30 to 7:00 and you will not want to miss out on all the fun as more details will be coming soon. And then since trustee Clapton's not here tonight, he wanted me to read his board announcements if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. From Eagle Valley Middle School, their students and staff raised $540 for Alzheimer's Awareness in September. All funds to be donated to the Memorial Alzheimer Fund in honor of Coach Blaver, B-L-A-V-E-R. This money then goes to Alzheimer's Research and to support families struggling with Alzheimer's. And they'll be having more fundraisers throughout the year for this cause, so I think that's a very good cause. And then this week, they're starting, they start off with a great week with their Week of Respect. And they will be having their Student of the Quarter recognition on November 15th. This recognizes students and parents, the recognized students and parents will be invited for a breakfast. They will also have a recognition rally on Friday, November 17th, to honor students for grades, attendance, and participation in club and sports. And they'll be hosting a Halloween dance on October 30th during the school day. Students will be allowed to dress up in costumes. Then also a huge thank you to our coaches and staff staying after school to support after school activities, clubs, and sports. They really appreciate you. I have one also for Carson Middle School. And their cross-country and girls' basketball seasons are coming to an end this week with the Tall Neva Championship for Cross Country on Thursday, the 16th at Kail Park in Lake Tahoe. And the girls' basketball championships at the Douglas Community Center on Saturday, the 18th. Their boys' basketball season starts on Monday and tryouts were today. Next week, their eighth graders will be visiting Carson High to learn about career and technical education, electives, and other exciting things a high school has to offer. They are looking forward to parent teacher slash student conferences, the week of October 27th through the 30th. And families will meet with their child's advisory teacher to look at grades, credit, test scores, and more. They would also like to invite their entire school community to their Fall Family Festival, which will be on November 6th from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. They'll be celebrating the many cultures within the community with food, activities, and fun. Finally, they invite everyone, especially veterans from the community, to join them on Friday, November 7th at 9:00 AM for Veterans Day performance honoring all who have served. Look for their veterans takeout on the front lawn as well. That's always a very exciting event. I've been to it, I think, every year for the last six, seven years and they do a really good job in their Veterans Day. And before I go on, for the fourth time, I'd like to mention that Carson did beat Douglas. And I was fortunate enough to be at the game. And it was very well attended, I mean, the stands were full on both sides. So I'd like to thank all the parents and students who came out for Carson to support Carson. When I arrived at the game, there was no parking in the parking lot. It was full. And it was very exciting and it came down to the last play when Douglas had the ball and Carson made them fumble and recover the ball, ended the game in overtime, so great job, guys.
Awesome, well, I'm sorry that I missed that. Molly?
Yes, so for Empire Elementary School, they just finished up their Week of Respect, which was October 6th through the 10th. They are having a candy contest. They are, bring a bag of candy and help your grade level win. The winning grade level or winning class will earn a pajama day and a pizza party. So please bring a bag of candy, their fall festival, I thought was scheduled October 17th, but now I'm thinking it might be October 24th. So we'll have to get that one straightened out, not quite sure. However, then beyond that, we did have, as the school board liaison for the Carson City Parks and Rec Commission meeting, we had a marathon meeting last Tuesday night and it was just very exciting, a lot going on with Parks and Rec. Um, and it was just, um, very exciting, a lot going on with Parks and Rec. They, uh, awarded an MVP employee who was presented for, um, you know, Going Above and Beyond, and his name was Stephen Tucker. Um, it's something new that the Parks and Rec is doing, and I think it's, um, it was very well received. Um, he was noticed by the public. The public is able to nominate anybody through Parks and Rec that they see as going above and beyond. And then they, um, are presented at a board meeting or at a commission meeting. Um, that we also heard from the, um, uh, trails for the Carson City Trail System. I don't know if many of you know that the, um, Carson down, uh, um, what is it? The Carson River Trail, they're going to be redoing it. They were awarded a grant for two-point-three million. Um, and it's for their Phase Four, and it will be the trailhead. So that whole park, when you're coming down Highway, uh, Fifth Street, is gonna be redone. Um, some really great plans. I would visit their website to see, and so we were given that, uh, presentation as well. And then we were also presented, um, so then that presentation. And then we were presented with, um, the Disc Golf. They're up on the east side of town, and they're redoing. They're hoping to add nine additional, um, I don't think you call them holes, but nine additional holes, I guess, in the south end of their, of what they're doing. And, you know, the one thing with that is it's all volunteerism. That group is all volunteerism. They do a, um, a fundraiser in March, which I'll bring that information to you as well. It's a Disc Golf tournament. It's always sold out. They had ninety-three last year, which was really good. Then the one action item that we had, which was really exciting, was we all voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Supervisors the John D. Winter Centennial Park Master Plan. Um, this master plan is to do Centennial Park, upper and lower. They're already putting in the artificial turf on the upper. However, they're gonna make some, um, you know, they have some, uh, other things that they wanna do up there, restrooms and that. But the lower development is where it's all being done. And it will have four, um, it looks, no, two baseball fields, um, a football field, and possibly two other football fields, which could be then six soccer fields or two large, large soccer fields. Those would be grass, um, a play structure, concession stands, restrooms. So that lower area is going, uh, parking. It was a phenomenal plan that was brought forward. So congratulations to Carson City Parks and Rec staff. They have worked diligently to make the parks around Carson City, um, just phenomenal. And it was just a, it was a really good meeting. So I encourage you all to visit the, um, Parks and Rec website and get, um, where it is. But we are recommending it. I will attend that meeting for the Board of Supervisors in hopes that they, um, approve the master plan for Centennial Park.
And when will that meeting be?
We don't know yet.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Well, congratulations for being part of that. I mean, that's, that's exciting, super exciting stuff.
Thank you.
All right.
So for me, uh, from Dr. Molden, uh, she wants to thank the Carson City Foundation for the grant that, um, they awarded her school for the, uh, games. They will be purchasing and some outdoor furniture to make the, um, Carson High School Silver Campus more inviting and have the students look forward to going to school. And then also on Tuesday, October twenty-first, they will be hosting the Powering Youth Future. I think the student also, uh, mentioned that earlier, uh, event from five-thirty to seven P.M. With pizza served from five-thirty to six. The Northern Nevada Electrical Training Center will be presenting about electrical apprenticeship program and paid training opportunities, career paths in electrical work, skills students with, can start building now, and how families can support future career, uh, success. And then the students and families, um, will also be invited from the eighth graders so that they can actually be introduced to the programs that are being offered at the Carson High School Silver Campus in hopes that they can recruit some students. And that concludes my report on that. But I also want to, um, inform the committee or the board members that, um, I attended the Carson City Foundation meeting last week, and they are encouraging everyone to consider, um, making a, um, payroll, uh, donation. Um, I handed each of, each, I mean, every one of you a sheet for you to consider, uh, making a, an ongoing donation. Um, if you, if you do wanna consider doing that, if you can fill it out at the end of the meeting and give it to Renee. Um, they would like to see that the board, um, that everyone, you know, every board member contributes so that they can have a hundred percent participation. They're also encouraging, obviously, everyone from the Foundation Board to do the same. Okay, very good. And then what else do, oh, so I joined Superintendent Feeling last week to the Future Carson High School Runners Race, and it was super, super fun. Uh, we had, um, we were very impressed to see so many families attending that event. And it was during the day. And Rebecca, you also joined us, and, and I believe your son also participated, correct? Yeah, it was super fun. Um, I was very pleased, again, to see so many families, um, supporting their children and just to be part of their, their education. It's, it's what we all look forward to, to seeing, you know, happening. So it was very nice, uh, very well attended, and congratulations to John Hager for that initiative. It was, it was definitely a very, very, um, successful, uh, event.
I believe that covers all the reports that I had. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Association Reports. And this is for, I'm sorry, Mike, sorry, forgive me.
No problem. I just wanted to, uh, report out for Seelager. So they had a chilly, but successful chili, as in cold, pumpkin patch on Saturday. And they wanna thank the community for support and remind everybody that a hundred percent of those, uh, profits go towards staff and students. And so they thank, uh, the community for that support. And they'd like to remind parents to sign up for parent teacher conferences. I should say parents or guardians, to sign up for parent teacher conferences for the week of ten-twenty-seven to ten-thirty.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Agenda Item Number Seven, Association Reports, and this is for discussion only. Do we have anyone from the association? No? Okay. Agenda Item Number Eight, Public Comment. Do we have in-person public comment? C nine, and I was told that we do not have an online public comment, so we will close public comment. And moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Discussion and Possible Action on Approval of Recommendations of the Benefits Committee Regarding Group Health Care Insurance Plan Design and Renewal of Coverage for the Calendar Year, January one, twenty-twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Approval of any insurance coverage may have a physical impact up to the amount contained in the budget approval by this board. And this is for possible action. Welcome, Melissa Davis and Mr. Dan Sattler. And I see we have more people. If you can, if you can, please introduce yourselves.
Absolutely. President Ramirez, uh, the sitting next to me here is Valerie Clark, um, formerly Valerie Clark and Associates, now Trucordia. And then Melissa Davies is next to her. And then we have Spencer Winward as a special guest on the end. Uh, so the information in your packet here, um, represents the, the recommendations based on our Benefits Committee, um, for benefits years starting in January. Um, so that being said, I'll just kinda let you know the process. Um, last year, we said, you know, we haven't really shopped around for a long time, so let's kinda see what's out there and, uh, kinda went to market. Um, Valerie can talk about what that process looks like. Uh, we did get some information back and decided that we were really best to stick with, uh, prominence last year. Um, this year, there's a few other changes that we'll highlight, but, um, and Valerie, again, I'm gonna ask her to kinda go through the process of negotiating with, uh, prominence or whatever you can share of that conversation and kinda where we started and where we ended up. So maybe we'll just kinda start with that part of it. So specifically with the medical plan and prominence. Do you wanna kinda give some highlights there?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Dan. Uh, good evening, members of the board, President Ramirez and members of the board. It's good to be with you tonight. I'm Valerie Clark with, uh, Trucordia, formerly Clark and Associates. And it's, uh, a pleasure to share the, uh, process of the renewal and, uh, how we get to the numbers that we get to and make the recommendations that we make. So, uh, this year, the district had a loss ratio of, uh, the mid-nineties, ninety-five percent loss ratio, which, um, and I, I, some of you are newer faces, so I'll explain the loss ratio again, which is basically, uh, the, the amount of premium dollars that the district pays annually, um, divided by the, the claims that are incurred by the district. Because you are such a large group, you are considered what we call a hundred percent credible, meaning your rates are based entirely on the utilization of the group. So you're not pooled with other business, um, you know, like the small group marketplace would be. So your loss ratio this year was a bit higher than prior years. It was up in the mid-nineties, ninety-five percent. Um, that puts us at a little bit of a disadvantage in trying to negotiate, um, with a lot of other carriers. Last year, we did shop, we did full shopping because we had a loss ratio that was better. It was in about the mid-eighties last year, so we had some room to negotiate. Um, ultimately, prominence still came back with the best premiums last year. And so it was, it made sense to renew with prominence. This year, we decided not to shop because you don't want to shop every single year. You lose a little bit of negotiating power if you shop every single year. And because our loss ratios were a bit higher this year, um, we were able to sit down with prominence and negotiate in a way that, um, they just reacted as a good partner would. And they have been a good partner for a number of years. They started out the renewal with a seventeen percent rate increase. Um, after quite a bit of conversation with them and a little bit of arm twisting, we did get it down to six-point-five percent. Um, with a ninety-five percent loss ratio, I consider that to be a very good and fair renewal. And they have been a good partner over the years. And I felt it was a very good faith effort on their part to be a good partner, uh, in a little bit of a tougher claims year. So we decided not to shop because I, I was, there's virtually no way we would get a better rate. And if we did, it would, we would not be served well to move you because it could be setting you up for a much more difficult renewal the following year. Um, so we, um, ultimately sat with the Benefits Committee, explained everything. Um, and, you know, as usual, they are very thoughtful and very, you know, we, uh, conversive with us. And ultimately, we all agreed that the six-point-five percent was a good renewal on the medical piece. Um, you guys have an excellent benefits program. We've hardly touched the benefits over the years. Um, over the last six years, we have averaged a four percent increase, um, every year, year over year, if we average it out. And I could not say that for any other group, I ensure, during the, these times. You know, I don't know if you heard yesterday, the exchange came out with their renewals, they're twenty-five percent. And so we, I think, are doing very well to have the benefits package that we have here at the district and continuously, year over year, have not paid on average more than four percent. Uh, it's, it's an excellent thing. And you have a fantastic health savings account, um, that you fully fund, well, up to three thousand dollars, which is, is just excellent. And half of your, uh, staff are on that program. Uh, it started out very slow, but over the years, it's become a very, very popular plan. And there are some people now that have tens of thousands of dollars in those accounts. Um, and it's, it's a great thing. And I, and I think it's caused, I think the reaction of the plan is that it has kept the rates very stable to have that health savings account in place. It's, it's been very, very good for the district, in my opinion. So that's the medical piece, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
And I may be premature with this question, but what's the total cost of the increase?
Uh, the total cost? If you, I believe you got these packets. Uh, the total cost is on the page towards the middle. And that number is uh, five-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and forty-four cents.
That's on this page right here?
Page seven, I'm sorry.
The renewal package?
Thank you. There's so many different numbers.
I know, and it's hard to, you know, we take booklets of information and put it down into a few spreadsheets, but it still is complicated, I know. But yes, this on page seven is the final dollar amount.
If, if you would, can you, would you mind going over some? Cause, um, Dan, you mentioned that there were some changes. Um, can you highlight?
Mm-hmm. On the medical piece?
Medical, dental, and vision?
Yep, mm-hmm. And I haven't gotten into the dental or vision yet. But on the medical, the, the only change on the medical is that the IRS does require us to increase the deductible on the high deductible health plan by a hundred dollars as a cost of living increase every year. So you'll see that highlighted on page five. You'll see right here, the deductible currently is thirty-three-hundred, and it has to go to thirty-four-hundred via IRS, um, requirement for the high deductible health plan, which is coupled with your health savings account. That's the only change that is in being incurred in the medical plan.
So the, um, so for an employee, it increased for the school district, but for the employee to add a spouse and children, that didn't increase?
That did increase. You'll see those numbers, um, for instance, in, on page five, which we were just on. You'll see the current premium. And then we have it listed for additional spouse, additional children, and additional family. We've got the current on the left column, and then the renewal numbers are on the right column. So you'll see all of those numbers.
So did that change for all plans or just the plan that you're highlighting?
No, for all of them, six-point-five percent across the board.
For HMO two?
Yes.
The Freedom One Thousand?
Yes, all of the plans.
Okay, and it all increased six-point-five?
Mm-hmm.
So then for a spouse, it went up six-point-five, for children, it went up six-point-five?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and you'll see all those numbers, uh, on the medical pages, which are the first few pages of the spreadsheets.
Okay.
And for retirees who stayed on the plan, did that go up also six-point-five?
Yes, they're all factored in as well at that rate.
All right, thank you.
And so I just wanna just make sure it's public. Nothing changed with the prescriptions?
No.
X-rays, none of, none of that changed?
No.
At all? Okay. And then nothing within, um, like what is covered for the Freedom One Thousand? All of like the details within the, the benefits plan itself stayed the same?
Yes.
Okay. So then this question is for Spencer. So Spencer, um, with the budget that we've been all, you know, talking about our forecasting, and we said that our forecasting was actually not too bad, is this wasn't in the forecasting?
We, we, hey, it does work. I've never used a microphone this far down before. When we did our budgeting, we included an increase of ten percent. And so where this is six-point-five percent, there actually is a little bit of savings based off what we budgeted. So I, I hope that's good news to all those who are listening.
Very good. Thanks.
I apologize, I don't have the exact dollar amount of those savings, but good news nonetheless.
Would you like me to go on with the dental and vision?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the dental is with Kansas City Life, and that did come into us with a proposed five percent rate increase for a twelve-month contract. We were able to negotiate that down. Uh, with the help of the Benefits Committee's, uh, requests and suggestions, we were able to negotiate that down to a three percent rate increase and have a two-year rate guarantee on top of that. Um, we are also able to negotiate, um, a dental implant benefit to be installed into the high-option dental plan as well. So I felt that was a big win for us. Um, we have not incurred rate increases. Pardon?
Well, I'm gonna get, um, personal on this one then, because this is, uh, personal. I mean, um, three kids with cleft lip and cleft palate, all three of them need, uh, dental implants, never been covered. So I have two more to go. So if you can explain that benefit, I'd greatly appreciate that. Cause that one is, that one hits home.
Yeah, I don't have the actual full verbiage in front of me, but we did. Do you have any information on that, Mel?
Yep, so they're covered under major services.
Can you please introduce yourself?
This is Melissa Davies with Trucordia, and the new implant coverage is covered under major services, so they'd be covered at the fifty percent up to two thousand.
So we are very happy about that because that does bring that high option dental plan into a different realm in terms of opportunities for people. So I'm really happy with that.
That's great.
And you do have a two-year rate guarantee on that as well. And then the vision, we were with a company called IMED. We have been with IMED longer than I have been with you, and I've been with you for twenty-five years. IMED has been the same plan with us at fairly good rates over the years, but this year, they did give us a six percent increase, and probably because we were coming off of a four-year rate guarantee, but they did give us a six-year, six percent, I'm sorry, a six percent rate increase. We were able to work with Kansas City Life on the vision. We realized that the benefit was a little outdated, so we were able to increase the benefit maximum on the frames from seventy dollars a year to a hundred and fifty dollars a year. So we more than doubled the benefit on the frames and were able to get a rate that was five percent higher than what we were currently paying, so we wouldn't be paying the full six percent renewal. We would move to Kansas City Life, take a five percent rate increase, increase the benefit by a significant amount, and offer a much larger network through the VSP network as well. The benefits committee was very happy with that offer from Kansas City Life to package it up with the dental and vision and life, and so they agree that that was what they wanted to vote for. So that is what we are presenting to you tonight, is an enhanced vision plan packaged up with your dental and life insurance with Kansas City Life. And then finally, the life insurance that the district has, a high and a low option life insurance benefit, we've had that for a number of years, that renews with no rate increase at all.
Zero percent of that one, okay.
Correct, yes.
This looks great to me. Anybody else, comments or questions? Go ahead. Dan, can you explain the committee, who's on that Health Benefits Committee?
Yeah, so we have members of all of our bargaining units, so Cecilia Lees-Crickshanks from the Administrators Association, Beth Rupke from our ESP, CESA Association, and Bridget Gordon, thank you, counselor at Carson High School, representing the Teachers Association, as well as Spencer, myself, and obviously Valerie and Melissa and her team.
I don't know if in the future, if it would, if we could possibly think about having a school board member, that we would then, when we get these, we would be able to maybe go to that school board member and, and do all of the questions that we had today for you.
As an ex-official? Because we wouldn't have, you guys would bring forward recommendations to us, so we would be an ex-official?
Yeah.
Is that possible?
Just so gives, gives us a little bit of the opportunity to, to go to them, you know, and kind of ask the questions that we were all, like, gathering today and yesterday and today. It was just a little overwhelming, I think, yeah.
Sure, and I think that's something to take into consideration. I will need to review what we have in the bargaining agreements and policy as far as the makeup of the committee. I think being part of the conversation will be welcome, and then that would probably help determine if it was a voting member or somebody who's just there to participate in the conversation as well, but I will certainly follow up on that.
And I would look at it as a non-voting member.
Sure.
But just somebody so we could have, I just felt that I overwhelmed you today, and I did not feel that that was appropriate, but it was, yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, President Ramirez. I just want to really thank Melissa and Valerie for their work over the years, helping us keep these rates in line. I know some superintendents are losing their minds right now. I believe down in Mineral County, they had a sixty-five percent increase that has been floated to them. Pershing County, a couple years ago, I think two consecutive years, they were in the forties. And the fact that, I mean, I would love to take credit for this, because from when I started here long ago, we have had many rate passes. We had one year where our rates actually went down, and so just, it's been incredibly helpful to us in the budgeting process and still offering incredible support. And they personally do support a lot of our staff when situations come up and just go above and beyond in trying to help make, make things happen and get clarifying information. So just really wanted to thank both of you for, for all of your work.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to work with you.
I do have, just so everybody knows, what's the total cost of the whole package? The insurance package, including the dental?
The total amount dental eye, dental vision, medical?
Right.
Cost to the district?
Very roughly, because I, I'm only doing it in my head, we're looking at about one point one, one point, not one, it's gotta be more than one point one.
Yeah, it's gotta be more than that.
One point.
I'm sorry, I thought maybe you'd have that.
I'm sorry, it'll be just around ten million dollars a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's straight around ten million dollars a year.
Okay. I just wanted people that are out in the public to know what it's.
Yeah, no, we're talking big numbers.
Yeah.
And, and we take that very seriously. We expect our insurance partners to take that very seriously, too.
Well, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that. Thank you for advocating for us, we appreciate it.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
I can go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees accept and approve the recommendations of the Benefits Committee as submitted for the renewal of coverage for the calendar year of January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, which may have a fiscal impact up to the amount contained in the budget approved by this board.
Sorry, Trustee Walker, you were beat by Rebecca. So motion by Trustee Barner, second by Trustee Roberts. Any more discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, once again, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, agenda item number ten, discussion and possible action to interview and possibly approve the selection of CCSD Family Life Advisory Committee members from both, an open application process and a request for renewal to serve a three-year term, January twenty twenty-six to December twenty twenty-eight, in the following categories, three parent representatives, one counselor representative, and one medical representative. And this is for possible action. Welcome, Mr. Brinkhurst and Mrs. Story.
Thank you, President Ramirez and members of the school board and also our district office. My name is Sheila Story. I'm the chief nurse for the Carson City School District, and I'm the chair of the Family Life Advisory Committee. This evening, we're here to present to you candidates for the positions that are currently open on the Family Life Advisory Committee, like Trustee Ramirez just said, three parent, one medical, and one counseling position. First, I want to let you know that we did go ahead and take an application or a letter of interest and a resume from a student representative. We are gonna also go ahead and open this up to other students at Carson High School. We're gonna go ahead and present it within the announcements at Carson High to see if we get some more interest in regards to some students who would like to be part of our board. The one student who is interested, her name is Nicole Lawler, she's a ninth grader at Carson High School, and like I said, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for other student members also, okay?
And will you be bringing that forward to the board once you have more applications?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Not a worry. Yep, we will do that, we will schedule that.
Of course. Molly has a question.
So if a student is on the board, then would they get volunteer hours in something that you would be able to sign off on?
You know, definitely, we can go ahead and write up a volunteer letter and give volunteer hours, because they are serving, and it is an important, important committee to be on, and they really truly learn a lot of information regarding Robert's roles of order, how to conduct a meeting, and also, it's a sensitive subject area, so I think they, they bring a lot to the table, and I think a volunteer hours would be appropriate. So first up, we have our counseling position. We have one candidate, his name is Jeremy Batten, if you could please come up. Jeremy Batten is a counselor currently at Carson Middle School. He does have children who do attend the school district. He comes with us with a lot of experience, including China Springs, Dayton, Dayton School District, and also the Carson City School District. So please welcome Jeremy Batten.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
All right.
Yes, press the button. There you go.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Batten. I am a practicing professional school counselor for, in eight years, in my ninth year. Five years, five of those were at Dayton Elementary. I'm in my fourth year at Carson Middle School, where I am the lead counselor. Prior to that, I was a licensed alcohol and drug counselor at China Spring Youth Facility down in Douglas County, and prior to that, I was working with at-risk youth in outdoor residential setting in New Jersey and also in Arizona and Oklahoma. Yeah, any questions?
All right, thank you. Do we want to start asking questions, each and every one of us, or?
I was just wondering, he's the only candidate?
Correct.
For the counselor?
For the counseling.
Correct.
So, I mean, we need one person as a counselor on the committee.
That is correct.
So I don't know if we need to interview him since he's.
I'm also a parent of a ninth grade girl, so.
I guess the overall question is, what would you be able, what would you bring to the committee? And then, one, how, and as a school professional, I think I know the answer, but I think what we struggle with, too, is attendance. You know, everybody can sign up to volunteer and say, I'm gonna be on this board, I'm gonna be on that board, but to actually be present and attend, I think, is extremely important, and so would you address your attendance policy?
Absolutely. That's a fair question. We are very, very busy people and working in the school district. But since I've been with Carson School District, I have been involved in many committees and organizations. I know President Ramirez can attest to that, and also my principal and superintendent feeling. And I've been very active and engaged in those, including at our school, the multi-tiered system of sport, tier-two team, where I co-lead that, also the MTSS tier-one team, where I co-lead that. Those are the two that spring to the top of my mind. But yes, I'm definitely active and engaged in many after-school activities, very committed to working with youth. I've been working with youth since, gosh, nineteen ninety-nine, so it's been my entire professional career.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your interest in adding to one more, to being part of one more committee. Anybody else, questions, comments? No? Okay. Well, I think that we, if we don't have any other questions, we welcome you to that position.
Ms. President, you're gonna need a motion at the end.
We should hold up on the motion until we?
Oh, you, you can take one now, you just, you, you need a motion to actually appoint him.
Okay, so.
So you can do all of them at once?
Do we want to, what's the preference of the rest of the board? Do we want to take a motion at, at this point, or wait till we do them all? Yeah, okay, very good. So we will hold up on the motion then?
No problem.
Okay. All right, Sheila, please proceed.
Once again, Sheila Story for the record. Our next category we'd like to bring up is our medical professionals. We have three candidates at this time. The first one is Lydia Viasenor. She is a registered nurse. She works for Carcental Hospital Behavioral Health Services. She is a behavioral health nurse educator, and she has two young children who attend our school district. Please welcome Lydia. Our next professional is Danica Williams. Danica Williams is a parent of three children enrolled in our Carson City School District. She is an epidemiologist and works for the Northern Nevada Public Health and is a research affiliate for the University of Nevada Reno. And our third candidate is Kyra Morgan. Is she here? Kyra Morgan is also an epidemiologist, and she is a parent of two young children within our school district, and she is a medical epidemiologist for the Nevada Division of Child and Family Services.
Welcome, and if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Lydia Viasenor. I am a nurse within the community. I've been a nurse for about seven years. I work at our Behavioral Health Service Department. I spent most of my years in the Behavioral Health Department as a nurse on the floor, and then recently moved on to our nursing educator position. I also have two kids, one is in the school district, she just started kindergarten, and I have grown up most of my life in Carson City and have gone through the school district and all the schools here.
Wonderful. Go ahead.
So, good evening. My name is Dr. Danica Williams, and I'm the parent of three children in Carson City, currently in first, fourth, and seventh grades. My husband and I are both proud Carson alum, so we have deep ties here in this community. Professionally, I'm an epidemiologist at Northern Nevada Public Health and a research affiliate at UNR School of Public Health with a focus on infectious diseases. Over the past decade, my work in Nevada has focused on communicable disease prevention, including HIV and sexually transmitted infections. I've managed statewide programs, taught university-level courses, and partnered with schools to strengthen health education. I also hold a bachelor's in secondary education, which gives me insight into both the science and instructional methods needed to deliver sensitive material effectively. So whether I serve as a parent representative or the medical physician, I want to support education that's accurate, age-appropriate, and responsive to our community, and I thank you for your time.
Wonderful, thank you, welcome, and thank you for your interest in serving on this position. Do we want to start with questions from the board? Michelle, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask them? No? Okay, Rebecca?
What, what brought your interest into serving on this committee? I know you both have medical backgrounds and both have kids. Is there anything else that kind of piqued your interest to wanting to have a voice in, in this kind of curriculum?
And just for clarification, we're gonna ask the same question to each of you.
So I guess part of the reason that I had an interest of kind of joining the committee is more from also a personal and then a professional aspect. Growing up, not only in the school district, but just in general, reflecting on some of the education and knowledge that I received growing up, and such a sensitive topic, it lacked in the sense of stemming from home, and then also kind of what I was taught as I was going through school as well. So I want to be able to be a part of, I guess, newer education and the presentation of it, whether it is from a parent standpoint or from like a medical standpoint. And then more from a professional side, I do work with a mental health population also, a youth population as well, and I know how sensitive, sensitive of a topic it is and how it pertains to not only medical health, but mental health as well, and I want to be a part of boosting that and helping educate them.
Okay. Danica?
Yeah, so for me, two, two big reasons. One, professionally, you know, over the last decade and even now, I work on a daily basis with schools. Yeah. So for me, two big reasons. One professionally, you know, over the last decade and even now, I work on a daily basis with schools and communicable diseases. Huge part of my job when I ran the HIV and STD statewide programs was identifying gaps. And so I became very familiar with specifically every county, but as the state, a lot of the barriers and specific challenges we face. So that was part of it. But also when I saw the kind of call for apps, I did realize, you know, as a parent and my unique background of an education degree, working for 10 years in public health, working on these topics, working with these populations very often, I just thought it would be best to volunteer if my skills could be of value.
Wonderful. Thank you. Richard?
Sheila, do we have one or two medical positions?
We have one medical position.
One medical, okay. Well, number one, I'd like to thank you both for offering to volunteer. And to me, this is something I don't like, having to interview somebody who wants to volunteer. And you're both very well qualified. So thank you for your interest in doing this. There again, I don't think I have any questions, so I'll just pass it on to Molly. But thank you, guys.
Molly?
Thank you. Yes, and thank you both for applying and because it is always, you know, time-consuming. So we appreciate your time that you're willing to give. What do you though, and if you'll both answer this though, what about the school district's mission and the purpose of the Family Life Committee is most meaningful to you? If you'll start, Danica?
So I think providing the best education and information to our students in the highest quality is the most important part of the mission goals of this school district. That's what I identify most with, especially with my background in research and data, that I really do believe that bringing high-quality facts and education to our students is one of the pillars and most important things that I identify with.
One of the things I find most important with the mission is essentially providing the students in the community and the youth in this community with the best education that is going to carry with them throughout their life because this is part of their medical health, their body. And whatever we can provide to not only keep them healthy and safe for now, but something that's going to carry with them through the future since these children are our future and can continue sharing the knowledge.
One last question. What we offer right now within our education, you know, the family life education, what we offer, do you see any changes or that would need to be made?
So actually, I reviewed a lot of the materials that you already have approved in a lot of the minutes. I actually think it's really well done, very engaging. And I saw that's really a huge focus that you wanted engaging to students and be factual. I don't think there's necessarily anything missing and I think a part of the committee is seeing what everybody feels could be most beneficial to add or improve. My own personal background, I think there's a lot of, or not a lot of, there's a lot of Nevada county-specific information that could be provided that I think isn't currently provided, that might help our students and our community understand our community even more than just the generic statistics.
I don't necessarily at the moment have changes that I think would need to be drastically made. I think a huge piece that I've identified in our community, just within our hospitals and working with youth, is that a lot of the media piece is a large aspect. And it's contributing to a lot of information and education that some of the youth are receiving right now. And I think it's such a heavy presence that it's something that not only should continue to be addressed, but definitely something that's going to continue rising and that's a piece that should always play a factor.
So I think you've already touched a little bit about engaging families. As you may know, we have a large percentage of Latino families in our community. In fact, we have the majority of our student population that are Latinos. How would you engage the Spanish-speaking families in these conversations related to their students' health?
So I do think it is very important to ensure that we're engaging all cultures, all families. And I think a way to do that is kind of gauge knowledge that, you know, some of the culture and population currently have, whether that's, you know, doing it through different surveys, talking to families, things like that, or maybe things that schools have identified is where there's areas education is needed and ensuring that we are offering it in different educational methods. And everything that we offer is in different languages as well, so that we are catering to all populations and all cultures and families.
So she said it very wonderfully. So I would only add that it's important for information and education to be culturally sensitive. And so a lot of that is understanding who your audience is and what they need and how they need it. I'm not familiar with any assessments that have been done, but if there haven't been assessments as to that population specifically recently, that might be an area as to connect with them to see how do we update our information and the way we communicate it to best effectively get it to that population. And that could go not just for the Hispanic population, but any of the populations that are in this community.
Of course. Perfect. Thank you.
Can I just confirm? If not chosen as the medical representative, you both are still interested in being a parent representative? Is that correct?
All right. I don't believe we have any other questions, so thank you so much for your time. Thank you. Sheila?
Sheila's story for the record again. Next, I'd like to go on to the parent representative. The first individual I'd like to invite up is Stephanie Cook. Stephanie Cook has a son who attends Eagle Valley Middle School. She has been on the committee and she put a letter of interest in and an updated resume because she'd like to stay on the committee. So I'd like to invite Stephanie Cook up to the table. She's our first parent representative. Our next parent representative is Erin Glass. Erin Glass has a son who attends Carson Middle School in sixth grade. He comes with a large background of law enforcement for the state of Nevada. One, including he was on the CIT team, which is the crisis intervention team for Northern Nevada. I'd like to welcome him. And the last one is Heidi Remnick. Heidi has a seventh grader who attends Carson Middle School, okay? And she has a legal background. She currently works for Douglas County District Attorney. She's a deputy district attorney. So I welcome all three of them up to, what's that? And Ashley, I did speak with Ashley. She has decided not to run for the board because we had such, we had so many other applicants. She said she was going to forego her application. So I welcome these three candidates up to the table for you.
Welcome. And can you please introduce yourselves?
My name is Heidi Remick. I have been, well, let me first say, I saw the dentist this afternoon, so half of my face is numb. So if my voice is strange or my smile is lopsided, it's temporary. I moved here to Carson City with my family in 2020, right at the beginning of the pandemic. And I have now settled into the community a little bit more and I'm looking to get more involved. My son, my youngest son is a seventh grader at Carson Middle School. I have an older son who is a sophomore at HUG High School. My partner is a special education teacher for the past 30 years. So my, she works up in Washoe County and my son goes up to school there on a variance with her. I, as I was introduced, I am an attorney. I've been a prosecutor for most of my career, almost 20 years as a prosecutor, both in Vermont and in Nevada. And most of that time, I have had a focus in domestic and sexual violence cases. And those cases are like the worst-case scenario of what happens when people do not know how to navigate consent and set boundaries and communicate those issues. So that's, that's one of the big motivators for me to get involved in this committee.
Thank you.
Stephanie Cook, for the record. I am currently on the Family Life Advisory Committee, going in for my third term here. We've done a lot of work in the last six years, so I'm interested in continuing that work. My son is a seventh grader at Eagle Valley Middle School and my daughter is a sophomore at UNLV, Go Rebels. So I, in my professional life, I'm the State Opioid Treatment Authority and I have oversight of the opioid treatment programs in the state and also oversee all the substance use programs. So I'm looking for a continued interest in this committee.
Well, thank you for your service and thank you for your continuous interest.
Hi, my name is Erin Glass. I've spent the better part of 15 years in law enforcement, 10 of that with the Department of Parole and Divisions of Parole and Probation supervising sex offenders, you know, robbery, murder, and drug use, things of that nature. So coming at it from that aspect, I get one foot in law enforcement and one foot in social work. So being able to, like Ms. Remick? Had said, seeing the effects of sometimes just lack of understanding, we don't know what we don't know sometimes. And seeing on the other end how that affects not only families but society. So being able to get on the front end of that and being able to have a positive impact to keep them with correct information, resources, family planning, things like that, to keep it from getting to the point where they have to meet me. I have a son who's in the sixth grade at Carson Middle School.
Oh, thank you. That was going to be one of my questions. Okay, thank you. All right. Michelle, you want to start? No questions from you? Okay. Rebecca? Okay. Richard?
Again, thank you, all of you, for your interest. And you pretty well covered why you want to serve on the committee, so thank you for that. And we pretty well know your background. And I guess I would just ask you, what do you feel your major contribution or strengths would be to be on the committee? And how do you like the Nevada State Police now versus Department of Public Safety? Because I can ask you that because I retired from there.
Oh, did you? It's easier to?
I did a brief stint at Deputy Chief of Parole and Probation at one time.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
When did you retire, if you don't mind me asking? Okay. Fair enough. So I will say that I like state police better than Department of Public Safety. It's easier to yell through a door when someone asks who it is. And can you repeat the question? I apologize.
What do you feel your major contributions or strengths as a member of this committee would be?
Like I had said in my intro, seeing the back end of some of the failures of education, family planning being one of those that traps people in cycles of generational trauma, violence, drug use, emotional disturbances, things like that, to be able to get on the front end, knowing the back end of it. I do have a degree from UC Davis in European history. And so I'm by no means, you know, this isn't going well. I guess a meathead, right? Like most law enforcement tends to have the reputation of being. I do try and come at things from an analytical standpoint of what's best practice, what's the science say, not just what the emotions say. That certainly has a place in things. But when it comes to educating kids, I think emotions and politics should take a backseat to what the science says, what best practice says. And having that perspective as a parent, I think would be helpful.
Go ahead, Molly.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Forgive me. I think, this is Stephanie Cook for the record. I think in spending the last six years on this committee, we've done a lot of work to really review materials and ensure the age appropriateness of them and that they're, you know, that the community voice is also there as we look at what materials are appropriate for our kids to be learning as it relates to family life. Under the great leadership of Sheila, you know, we're now taking an approach of looking at all the old stuff we've got on the list and like, you know, as things change via technology and other things, really looking at revising all that criteria. The content may not change, but the way it's being given to our students and learned is maybe different. So I think continuity and strength in leadership is important. And so I think that's what I bring to the table, continuing my service on this committee.
Heidi Remick, for the record. I think I bring to the table a broad perspective because when I talk about consent issues, I'm not just talking about in the context of dating or romantic relationships because these are really issues that we all navigate every day in all aspects of our lives. I mean, who here has ever felt pressured to do something that you weren't entirely comfortable with? And it's not just in a dating relationship. Maybe it's something at work. Maybe you've been guilt-tripped into serving as a volunteer when you really don't have the time to devote for it. And that happens to all of us. And many of us don't have the confidence or the vocabulary to set those boundaries and advocate for those boundaries. And I think it's also important to note that, you know, societal norms of consent and appropriateness of behavior change over time. As anybody who's watched a TV show from a few decades ago and been uncomfortable about things that were totally normal, you know, the last time you watched it 15 or 20 years ago. And we're preparing our students not just for school, but for all of their lives outside of school when they'll have to recognize these issues and talk about these issues and be able to check in with themselves and each other to be able to navigate consent and boundary issues. I also, I've served on a school board before in Vermont. I've served on a lot of different committees. So I am familiar and comfortable with working in this sort of setting with the rules of order in terms of organizing a meeting like this. And also with building consensus. As an attorney, you know, the main thing we do in our job is is listen to all the different perspectives of what happened in a situation and be able to condense that down into coherent, digestible language to communicate to juries, to judges, and so on.
Now it's my turn. Thank you. I'll wait for him to give me the green light again. But thank you again for all applying and wanting to continue. And I'll ask the same question I asked the first two as well is, what about the school district's mission and purpose of the Family Life Committee is most meaningful to you? And we'll go ahead and start here.
The time that students spend in school is a small portion of their lives. We are really preparing them to be citizens of the world. And so the, I think it's really important to educate them not only so that they find academic success, but so that they have the tools and skills they need to be successful in the workplace, successful in their future education, successful in the workplace, successful in their future education, successful partners and members of their family. And so that's the perspective I would bring.
Stephanie Cook, for the record. I think it was no, when this legislation was passed to form these Family Life Advisory Committees, I don't think it was a mistake that the makeup of the committee was outlined as it relates to the various representation that's on the committee. I think it helps with a balanced voice of all of us, right? So it's very helpful, I think, to have, you know, the medical perspective, the counselor perspective, the parents, and the whole makeup of the committee to really be in a room together and having that balanced voice to really review these materials and talk about the various things, and how we want it to be reflected in our health classes throughout our school district.
My current position with State Police is as a sergeant at the Training Division for all in-service training in the North. And having to look at what the needs are of the community, as well as the law enforcement community, mixing the two, seeing what needs done and how to do it, means pulling in a lot of outside resources and perspectives to make sure that all the needs are met, and that we're not forcing one on top of the other. So having the ability to, as was just said, bring all of those perspectives together is fantastic, and quite frankly, the only way that anything's going to be successful. So already having, I guess, a background in that kind of liaising and cooperation, and being able to put together desperate pieces to a puzzle, is something that's going to be a good contribution to the committee.
Okay, perfect. And I don't have any questions either. So I believe at this point, we will make a motion. But first, we will go one by one, right, to identify the vote for each category? Is that so?
Yeah, you can do-
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming to this interview. We really appreciate your interest in volunteering. Okay, so, I'm sorry, one more time?
However you want to get to the motion is fine. If you want to go down the line and have everybody contribute, you can do that, or somebody can just make a motion. You have five spots to fill.
Okay. How do you want to proceed? You want? Everyone get a vote? Okay.
Like on all five at once?
Well, first, we go with the first category. I would, Counselor, and then Medical, and then the third, Parent.
President Ramirez, if I may?
Yes.
First thing I like to say is, at the end of these interviews and such, I always like to invite all of the candidates, whether they receive the position or not, to please come to the School Board or the Family Life Advisory Committee meetings and be part of them, because their voice will be heard, even though they can't be a voting member at this time. We do appreciate their input, their insight, their experience, their knowledge, to help us make the best decisions we possibly can regarding Family Life Advisory material. Also, in the past, we have had an alternate parent member. This individual was very active within the board, and then she actually did become a board member a year or two down the road.
Thank you for saying that. And it would be also important to mention that we really appreciate your guys' time in submitting those letters and, you know, all the time that you put into doing that. We really appreciate it, and your interest in helping the district. And please know that we do have other positions available, so by all means, continue applying for other positions. Okay, thank you, and we will go ahead and start tallying. Is that what we can do right now? Do we want to do, do we want to first take the vote for the Counselor? Oh, not the Counselor, I'm sorry. Medical? Do we want to identify the vote for the Medical Physician?
Sure.
Michelle? Who did you want to?
Well, I first wanted to say I'm so impressed with the pool of candidates. And it sounds, I would say if we could have you all, I would love to have you all, and it sounds like with the possibility of an alternate position, that is a reality. So thank you all for caring enough to put your name in the hat for this. For the Medical, I think I'm leaning towards Danica as my Medical Position, but also with retaining Lydia in the Parent Position, for sure.
I'm sorry, your vote was for?
For Danica to fill the Medical Position.
Okay, all right. So Michelle, Danica, okay? Okay. And Rebecca?
I agree, this is very hard. You guys are all amazing candidates, so thank you for the time and everything that you've put into this. My vote for Medical is Lydia.
Lydia, okay. So Lydia. Okay, and Richard?
Maybe I'm confused here, but Kara Morgan?
And just so you all know, we did have the opportunity to review all the documents that were provided, so-
She was not here.
Yeah, so real quick, what I did is I did call each individual candidate by phone. I also sent an email as a reminder, and Kara said she was going to try to make it, but she does work in Reno, and she was unsure if she could make it this evening, but I was hoping she could make it, but apparently she did not.
Then, you know, I forget your name, not your name, I forget your name, sorry. Danica, yeah. She's my vote.
I'm sorry, Danica?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Walt?
For Medical, I'd go with Danica, and then put Lydia in the pool for Parents.
For Medical? We're still on the Medical?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And now we're gonna, so that was the second category, Medical, and then now the-
So I think you and Mike still need to-
Correct. Thank you. I thought of all of you guys, but myself. Okay, so yes, for my vote is, and I want to say thank you, because you both complimented each other. I mean, we could, I wish we could get both of you, but I am going to go with Lydia. My vote is for Lydia.
Yes, my vote would be for Danica as well.
Okay. Trustee Walker, Danica. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, for Danica, okay? And then one, two. Okay, so then it is Danica. Okay, and then we go with the Parent. That's the third category. Okay. Michelle?
Lydia, for sure, as a Parent Representative, would get my vote, and then Heidi as well. And then, it's a tough one for me between Stephanie and Erin. Stephanie, I really value the six years that you've put. It sounds like you're very invested, and I appreciate that. Erin, with your law enforcement background, and just having another male voice, I think, brings a lot of value as well. But for my third spot, I think Stephanie is my third Parent Vote.
So for the Parent Category, we need three? Sheila, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So Heidi, Lydia, and Stephanie for me.
So, okay, Michelle. Heidi, Stephanie. And Lydia. Okay. And then Rebecca?
Okay, mine were Lydia, Erin, and Stephanie.
Lydia, Erin, and Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Richard?
My three would be Heidi Remick.
I'm sorry, Heidi?
Yeah, Heidi. Stephanie Cook, for her continued service and her continuation, I think it would be important. And then Erin Glass. I feel that having a male voice on the committee would be very valuable, which I don't think we have any other males right now, do we?
We currently would have Jeremy Batt as the Counselor.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Molly?
Yes, I'm going to go Lydia, Stephanie, and Erin.
Stephanie, and who else?
Erin.
All right, okay. Okay, and my vote is, let's see, Stephanie, Erin, and Heidi, yeah. So Stephanie, Erin, and Heidi. And Mike?
Yes, I, my choice would be Stephanie, Erin, and Lydia.
Do you have it written down, too? Okay, good. Okay, then at this moment, I will entertain a motion.
All right. I move that the Carson City Board of Trustees approve Lydia Villaniss Nor, sorry about that, Stephanie Cook, Erin Glass, as the Parent Representatives, Jerry Batten as the Counselor Representative, and Danica Williams as the Medical Representative to serve on the Family Life Advisory Committee for a three-year term, January 2026 to December 2028.
All seconded.
Okay, so motion by Trustee Walt, and second by Trustee Varner. Any more discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Well, thank you once again very much to all the applicants. We really appreciate your time and your interest in helping the district with this endeavor.
And I'd just like to add, Heidi, I really encourage you to please stay present.
President Ramirez, just so the record's clear, was there any opposition to the motion?
Any?
Did anybody say no?
Did anyone say no? No opposition?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Did I skip that part? I'm sorry. Okay, oh, okay, good. Good, good, we're all clear? We're all good? Okay, awesome, all right. Well, thank you again very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this moment, I am going to move on to Agenda Item. I'm going to switch Agenda Items here. I'm going to move on to Agenda Item Number 18. Informational Update on the CCSD Budget for Fiscal Year 2026, and this is for discussion only. Welcome, Mr. Winward.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board.
We don't have enough, we don't have a hand up.
All righty, I believe this was original item 18, but it's being moved up at your request.
We moved it, yes.
And so, and again, as we've been kind of going through the Board of Workshops and looking at all of the different funds, you request kind of an update of where this budget's looking. We're focusing really on the General Fund, since that's, everything kind of ties into that. And we have more information available since our last, since the final budget, and then, you know, as last month, we kind of presented information on how enrollment has affected the budget, and so this is kind of next step further to add several other items of information and see what they do to us, so. Here's just kind of a list of items that we've evaluated that have affected this, that we included in there. So a final placement of nearly all our new hires, we have some that may increase steps if they're able to provide the requisite proof of their previous experience, but most of that is settled and in place at this point in the year. The PERS increase, which was previously budgeted for, steps for employees, also previously budgeted for. We've updated supplemental salary costs to reflect what those will actually be this year, now that we've got more information on that. Longevity, educational increments have all been updated, and impacts of that have been rolled into what I'm presenting tonight, as well as our negotiation fiscal impacts. And then, as I discussed, you know, we looked at enrollment, and we were a few students above where we had budgeted for, which was good news, and that's all kind of rolled into this as well. So as you recall, from the final budget presented in May, and we discussed in other times, the structural deficit is $3.2 million. And as we've looked at all of the items we've just kind of discussed, the difference of what those all makes would be $700,000. And again, that's a combination of everything, every little salary change, steps, PERS increase, everything that we have into there, and negotiation items. And to keep conservative, we're not making any adjustments to revenue, even though we did have a slight increase, and for objectives, we're just keeping all of our other expenses the same, just to make it easy to see kind of what it looked like, what it is now. And again, keep in mind that about 87% of our expenses are salary and benefits across the General Fund. So with those additions, that would move our structural deficit to $3.9 million, and that's as it stands now. We're always looking at ways to minimize that, to save funds, to provide the same services we are at lower cost, and I will mention that we have not included any vacancy savings into that, mostly because I kind of feel it's not good to count your chickens before they hatch. For example, you know, if we have a teacher that's salary is $60,000 and benefits are about $35,000, $40,000, that's $100 of savings, but if we fill that position two weeks from now, you really don't have those savings yet. So, but as we get towards the end of the year and are able to realize those, that would affect this number. So those are not in there. Our vacancy savings, we do not make any adjustment for that at this point in the year. Any questions?
Questions?
Just for two seconds time. What's up?
You were finished, right?
Yes.
All right. I have to stop jumping the gun. So, okay, so we're looking at $3.9 million deficit. What is our revenue, what's in the bank account right now?
What's in the bank account? Meaning like, what does our any funding balance look like?
Yes.
I knew you'd ask hard questions.
So sorry.
16.9 or 15? North of 15 million?
15, did you say?
Yes. I looked at that number various times today, but it's, I also looked at several other numbers today.
So wait, I'm confused, because I thought at the last budget, we were at 12, and then we had a three-point, we were in the deficit, so we did deficit spending.
15 would be what we had at the beginning of this year, so with that, this deficit would take us, with the 3.2, would have taken us to about 12, which probably goes with your recollection, that the 3.9 would take us slightly below that.
Okay, so then we'd be looking at 12, and then minus the 3.9, so we'd be looking at like eight. And so we are kind of doing, no, what do we-
No, 15 at the beginning of this year. If we spend everything we budgeted, it'd be that 15 million minus the 3.9, so we'd be looking at 11.1.
Okay. And so, so at the end of the day, though, we continue to deficit spend? And you're looking at deficit spending at 3.9 right now, when we were at 3.2, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So obviously, we can't continue this year to year. So the hard question is, and I don't expect you to answer it tonight, and I know that this is why we're doing the workshops as well, but when we're done with all of the workshops, the hard question is going to be, how do we stop it? What do we need to do to make sure that this deficit spending does not continue? And that's where I think it's going to take the entire Board, it's going to take everybody, it's a complete team, your administrators, your employees. Everybody needs to come together and say, how do we stop with the deficit spending, you know, and how do we make those tough decisions? We do it this year, we're not going to be able to do it continuously. And then knowing as well, and thank you for building in the benefits, you know, the 6.5 increase of our benefits, thank you for building that in there, but, I mean, we're hearing that it's gone up 6.5 this year. Can't imagine we're going to go, they're going to come back and go, oh, and guess what? Since you paid 6.5 increase, we're going to bring it down for you next year. It's going to be a status quo, if not increased from there as well. And so I think that's where we look at, we need to stop sooner than later.
Yeah, we will definitely want to be very- Yeah, we will definitely want to be very wise, we want to plan ahead. Later on in this meeting, we'll talk about kind of where things will fall next year, if everything stays the same. Do we essentially, because we're doing exactly what, what you're wanting us to do, is to plan ahead and not be caught to where, oh, wow, we're in a, we're in a situation where we can no longer sustain this. And I, I think as you as board members understand that, you know, deficit spending cannot just go on and on, because we don't have that right or privilege.
Well, and I think too, what I want to avoid is, we get to a situation where we're not filling vacancy, you know, we know that the, the general fund is primarily employees and benefits as well, but then we get vacancies, and, and it always looks good that says, oh, guess what, the school district is zero, they did zero layoffs. But then what's in the underlining is, they didn't fill 30 vacant positions. And so in all honesty, then you're getting rid of those positions, you're increasing classrooms, you know, classroom size, or you're, you, you have less paraprofessionals. And that's what I don't want to see, you know, moving forward. Because right now, we have, what we're doing is working, and we saw that with our, you know, the star ratings of the school and everything else, what we're doing is working. And we continue to progress, and we continue to do well. And so that's what I would like to be able to see on that end. So you have your work cut out for you, I know.
I would agree with you that we all do, it will be a team effort. Any further questions?
Just curious, apparently, how many vacancies do we have?
Oh, that is a Mr. Sadler question, if I've ever heard one. There's a guest seat down there at the end.
I can actually pull it off our website in real time, but we started the school year off with five certified teaching vacancies, and I want to say we had 11, actually 13 classified vacancies to start the school year. And so some of those positions have been filled. We've had a couple of situations with employees change, where they're resigning, so. If you give me a minute, I can pull it up and tell you exactly what we have on the books.
Okay.
Well, with five vacancies for certified, that's amazing.
Yeah.
That's really good. And I don't think I need to repeat how I feel about deficit spending, I've been doing it for, what, six years now? So I think everybody knows, and I agree with what Molly's saying, is, you know, let's continue to plan ahead. If we had to make cuts, let's make them the easiest that we can without impacting the students.
Yes, but please keep in mind also that we kind of had about a $2 million planned spend down this year, just because to follow within the parameters of where we want our any fund balance to be, to be the most advantageous, advantageous to the district, we did need to kind of deficit spend this year. Circumstances have made it's a little bit larger deficit than we would have hoped. But, so I know that 3.9 seems large, we needed a deficit spend about $2 million, and that was kind of a part of a planned spend down this year as, as well.
But if you spend that $2 million this year, that you had to, that's going to carry over to the next year and the year after, unless.
That is where we do have our work cut out for us, to figure out what, what best serves the district and our students.
Right, the students mainly.
Okay. Well, thank you. This is very helpful, so thank you, we appreciate it.
To be continued.
Okay, yeah, to be continuous, right? All right. Okay, now we can continue with our agenda item number 11. Discussion and possible action on recommended approval of the July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2029 tentative agreement with the following Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Orange Bay County Education Association, OSHA, I should say, OCEA, excuse me, with an estimated fiscal impact of $1,937,149, and this is for possible action. Mr. Dan Sadler and Mr. Spencer Winward also, yeah?
You try to get out of it.
Just trying to get away.
Dan Sadler, for the record, thank you very much, and pleased to present to you tonight the draft agreement that we have presented with our partners in education, OCEA. We completed negotiations this summer, have been working on getting this put together. The term that you see there is a four-year agreement, so again, you go in through June 30, 2029. If approved, it would be retroactive to July 1, 2025. Couple highlights, streamlined processes for efficient resolution of disputes, we just, a lot of cleanup that we had to do, clarifying and simplifying some of the processes and payouts that we have on the books. Cleanup of the supplemental position compensation structure, and that's really just the way it looks physically on there. Hoping that that's helpful for everybody who has to utilize that in the future. What happened to my screen here? There is a step added for fiscal year 2627 to column six, and my screen just got cut off, but I think that's also in place for 2526. Mr. Winward? Yeah, I, my note page just got cut off.
So for OCA, there, there is 1% added in column six for 2526. And then in the following year, 2627, there is additional step, I believe it's delineated by step Q for the next year, and that goes across for column six as well.
Thank you. My screen's back. So any questions?
Questions or comments? Molly? So this has been a long time going, and I think that you guys have done a phenomenal job. I think you've done a great job communicating with the board as well. I appreciate you answering all the questions that have been given to you time and time again, so I do appreciate your time. I appreciate, appreciate the bargaining units, OCA's time as well. This is, you know, I mean, like I said, it's a long time coming, so I really appreciate all the work that you have done. I do want to reiterate that that 1.9 is two years, correct? So it's 800,000 this year and 800.
Yes, as the last couple bargaining units have been over two years, and since there is a potential for a reopen in two years, we elected to show that fiscal impact over the next two years.
For two years.
Because there are a lot of unknowns between then and now, and we'd be estimating way into the future. So the 1.9 is over this year and next fiscal year.
Okay, just those who are reading the agenda were, yeah, so I appreciate that. But thank you again for your time, and, and thank our attorney as well. Anybody else? Okay, if not, this is an action item, I will entertain a motion.
I can make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2029 tentative agreement with the following Carson City School District Bargaining Group, the Orange Bay County Education Association, OCEA, with an estimated fiscal impact of
Second. Sorry? Michelle? Okay, all right. So motion by trustee Varner, and second by trustee Peterson. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Public comment?
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Fuehling, trustees. My name is Brian Wallace, the president of the Orange Bay County Education Association, representing all the teachers within the Carson City School District, our counselors, and all our other OLPs that are out there also. I wanted to thank the district's bargaining team for all their hard work and being prepared at the table. Our interest-based bargaining system works absolutely wonderful, because our mutual interest, interest is the education of the children within the Carson City School District and Carson City, and then we work from there. We have had this mutual interest now for the 17 years I've been in this position, and it's been absolutely wonderful, and this year was no exception. A few little notes as you get ready to ratify this, which we greatly appreciate. The 1% really helps the problem you have in this district, and that's called longevity. Your teachers come, you hire them, HR does a wonderful job, and has a history of it, of hiring wonderful educators for our district, and then they never leave. As an example, almost half of your certified staff is all the way over in column six, out of approximately 500 teachers. And a lot of that's from everything the district offers for credit movement, because we want staff to be certified in GATE, we want them to be certified in ELAD, we want them to be the best of the best, and unfortunately, that does cost money. When you look at where staff currently resides, when it comes to adding a row to column six, you have approximately 133 certified members out of approximate 500 certified members that are bottomed out on the salary. They will not see another increase for approximately the four years, unless the Nevada Legislature and $2 Joe finally does something. And that's where your deficit is to blame. Asking us to consider cuts is rough, when the Nevada Legislature and $2 Joe refused to pass the plan and ignored all the work by our educational partners this Nevada legislative session. For benefits, just to add a little clarity, over the years I've been doing this, the benefits are based solely on that loss ratio. And luckily, with Valerie and her team, every time they come to us as a benefits committee, she has worked extremely hard, as you heard, to get us down if there's going to be a rate increase. We have had those years where there's been an actual rate decrease, and then an actual rate pass for several years in a row. That is how this district has achieved an any fund balance of almost $16 million at one point. Every time there is a rate pass, this district saves approximately 10%, because that's what you, you have a budgeted and agreed to for that year. That is money that has allowed us to continue to operate, and that's how we survived getting through the Great Recession at that time, much to, much to the chagrin of the trustees that were there. We did not do layoffs, we did not do cuts, we did not freeze step in columns, because through our partnership and interest-based bargaining, we were able to get through that. And in the midst of the Great Recession, that school board at the time, through the help of everybody, was able to give us a 1% raise across the board, while all other districts were doing the opposite.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Wallace, to interrupt, I think we exceeded the three minutes, so we thank you for, for your partnership, we appreciate it. Any additional public comment? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number 12, discussion and possible action on recommended approval of the July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2029 tentative agreement with the following Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Carson City Administrators Association, CCAA, with an estimated fiscal impact of $138,694, and this is for possible action. Mr. Sadler and Mr. Winward?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. So before you is a tentative agreement with Carson City Administrator Association, again, a four-year agreement, lot of updated language, clarifying some things that have just been outdated, so a lot of language changes. Additional contract days for elementary principals and assistant principals, vice principals across the district. I believe there was an update for the salary schedule that Mr. Winward had presented. One thing to point out there is that the increase of days is specific to vice principals. Previously, there was another position tied to that elementary school vice principal salary schedule in the assistant director position, and that position is not seeing an increase in days, so just one thing to highlight there. Those increase of four days across the board for all vice principals and elementary principals combined. There are some adjustments for longevity. We feel that that's a really good move, so that we have continuity across associations. We do have a lot of people who are in the certified ranks that end up in administrative ranks, and we don't want to have them lose longevity when they're staying with our district. So that consistency also helps out with retention of our veteran administrators. With that in mind, I'll pass it over to Mr. Winward, anything else you want to touch on?
I believe you've covered it, but we're, we're welcome, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Again, thank you again for working with this bargaining unit as well, answering the questions and meeting, you know, with the board as often as you did as well. So it's great to know that everybody can come together and make this work out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I would echo that, thank you very much for all the hard work that you guys put into this. This is a lot. Okay, this is also an action item, so I will entertain a motion. I can do that one. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2029 tentative agreement with the following Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Carson City Administrators Association, CCAA, with an estimated fiscal impact of $138,694, $694.
All seconded.
Okay, so motion by trustee Roberts, second by trustee Varner. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 13, annual review of the manner in which the statewide performance evaluation system for teachers and administrators is carried out in the Carson City School District as required by NRS 31, 391.485, and this is for discussion only. Mr. Sadler?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. So yes, you satisfy the statute requirement, and also just good to keep our eyes on how things are going. We'll be presenting information on the NEPF, Nevada Educators Performance Framework, ratings for our certified and administrative staff, and also some of the highlights from the survey information. This information is collected throughout the year as we complete evaluations, and then we create a report that goes to the Nevada Department of Education, which then they put into a state system and kind of compare things statewide. So in your packet, you do have a breakdown as far as the numbers in our district, and then the numbers, or, excuse me, the percentages for the state, just kind of as a comparison. One thing to note on that data sheet that we uncovered in our conversations within the E, we use a software platform to gather the information called Evaluize. And as we've been pulling reports on Evaluize, if there's not a, I'll just call it a secret code for the teacher, because when we pull that information, we don't want names associated with it when we submit it to the state. And so if that code is not properly attached to the employee, that data doesn't get pulled in that report. So as you're looking at some of these numbers, you go back to 2021, and I'm looking at the sheet that looks like this, I don't know what page that's on in your packet, but as you look on the right side, you see like in 2021, we had 419, and then it looks like we've had to decline at 332. And, and that's not accurate information. There was a handful that did not get reported in the state report, just due to not having that control code on there. So that is an error that we found out after the fact. We've rectified that for this year to ensure that that does not happen on our reporting requirements. So it, it does change the data a little bit, but the trend data is very similar to the percentages that you see here. So just one thing to highlight. All right, so again, overview is that Nevada law requires that all local education agencies in the state annually review the manner in which schools carry, carry out the evaluation of teachers, administrators, so that's why we're here tonight. And I know we do this every year, but just as a reminder, like, there's an evaluation cycle. NEPF really covers all of our classroom teachers and administrators. We do have some certified staff members who are not in NEPF as well, like TOSA's Teacher on Special Assignment, they're not under the NEPF framework. But NEPF also covers our other licensed educational professionals, such as school psychologists, school social workers, school counselors, library media specialists. They have a different rubric that is followed than the teachers, but they do have a framework under the state NEPF. All of the evaluation cycles for anybody under NEPF, as an OLIP, as a classroom teacher or as administrator, follow a similar cycle, in that we start with a self-assessment of where we think we are in the process, according to all the standards and indicators. We follow evaluation cycle that includes all of these steps, including a pre-evaluation conference, goal setting, and plan development. conference, goal setting and plan development. Next step in that is conducting observations, having conferences, collecting and reviewing evidence. The fourth step is a mid-cycle review and that should take place roughly mid-cycle for the evaluation. And that's just a chance to really review and check in specifically on the student learning goal, which I'll go over in a minute, but also any evidence that we've collected. Often, we get to the mid-cycle review and we have evidence to suffice to move forward in the evaluation and it gets completed earlier in the school year. Sometimes we need more evidence as we're going through that process. So that mid-cycle review is really a chance to kind of check in both for the evaluator and the evaluatee to have a conversation to see where we're at. And then that step five at the end of it is a summative evaluation and a post-evaluation conference. There's different requirements depending on if you're a first-year probationary, there's three cycles as a minimum that need to be completed, whereas if you're post-probationary, it's one cycle. And there's some different statutory requirements for second and third-year probationaries as far as when those evaluations need to be completed. We won't get into the weeds with that tonight. This is really just an overview. Just know that there's a lot of language that's being proposed also through legislation to make changes to the NEPF. And so there's going to be a lot of dialogue taking place this year, both with the Nevada State School Board and the Teachers and Learners Council, Teacher Leader Council, I always forget, actually the acronym for the TLC, which I should know because I'm a member. But the updates will start changing for NEPF in July, excuse me, on July 1, 2026 as kind of round one, and then there'll be some additional changes as we get into the next session. Of course, we'll have another session before some of those changes take place, so things could change in the next legislative session. So it gets a little confusing. We're just going to stay focused on what's in front of us for this year. So as far as the category weights, we have educational practice, which has components of instructional practice standards and professional responsibility standards. You can see those listed. That makes up 85% of the evaluation for post-probationary educators and second and third-year probationary educators. Student performance is 15%. That's the SLG. You might hear that term when you're, as you're having conversations with people across the district. And that's really student progress and growth proficiency targets that are set by the educator to measure how students are doing. I think we've grown a lot in the student learning goal area from when we first started working with NEPF, when that was first a requirement for us. And I don't think there's nearly as much fear in that conversation as there was initially coming into it. So as we go through the cycle and complete evaluations through that summative, everybody receives an overall score based on these weightings. A 3.6 to 4.0 is highly effective, 2.8 to 3.59 is effective, and then you can see the scores for developing and ineffective. There is also a rubric that scores the SLG and that is followed to be a score of a 1, 2, 3, or a 4. And then you can see that in order to be highly effective, it needs to be a 3 or a 4. Also, for post-probationary educators, if they have two years of highly effective scores in a row, then we get essentially a waiver for that third year. We still have some documents we need to complete. We still need to go through some of the evaluation cycle, but there's not all of the formal requirements of the cycle required for any educators that are two years highly effective. So again, a little bit more about the process, specifically for SLGs, because I think that's probably the one we get the most questions about. And it really should be a process of collaboration between the administrator completing the evaluation and the educator who's also completing the evaluation but being evaluated so that it's collaborative. And that usually starts with what goals the educator has through that self-assessment. SLGs really can reinforce good teaching practice because they tie right into how we're supporting instruction through those professional and instructional responsibilities. And so if we really want to see student growth and we know where students are, how do we change our instructional and professional responsibility and those practices to have an impact on student learning? And that's really what we're trying to measure through those SLGs. And they're also adaptable because if we say, okay, my students right now are performing overall a 6 out of 10, I want to grow that number to be a 10 out of 10. And as I'm going through the evaluation cycle and I'm collecting evidence and I'm not seeing the growth, I might need to make an adjustment. And so again, back to the mid-cycle review, that SLG is adaptable. We're not locked into it. We can make some adjustments. That may change in the future with some of the discussion about what might need to be used and considered an assessment. And that might even depend on what subject you teach in the future. But for right now, we really want this to be highly collaborative and ensure that those SLGs are adjustable. So this is the scoring rubric for the SLGs themselves. You can see that if you are going to be at the high level and scoring a four, you must have one source of growth or achievement from multiple points in time showing evidence of high growth and high impact for all or nearly all students on which the SLG was set. So it's a very high standard to build a score of four. And then you can see scoring a three, there's a little bit of change in language there that you have at least one source of growth or achievement from multiple points in time, similar language, that show clear evidence of growth and impact for most students. And so again, you can see that, well, what is the definition of clear evidence in most versus all or nearly all? Like those are conversations that should be taking place collaboratively so that we can decide, hey, what are we going to say is going to be considered high growth and high impact according to what this goal is? And that ensures that that's not something that's done to an educator but done with an educator, with growth in mind for all. So overview of our ratings for this year, again, that number is not complete with 332. I will be happy to pull the data with those codes this year and update you on that, but we are missing a good chunk of our evaluations from this data. That said, here we have represented, you can see the total numbers, 18 school administrators, 11 counselors, two school nurse, three school psychologists, five social workers, eight speech pathologists, two teacher librarians, and 332 teachers. Overall, we have done very well with the evaluation results. I think we've learned how to use this as a tool, effective and highly effective. We've been in the high 90 percentiles for a couple of years now with evaluations. And I think that shows the really good quality of educators, both teachers, counselors, librarians, everybody is on this list, including school administrators. We have really good, high-quality people doing a lot of really good work here.
Can I ask a quick question? What would put somebody in that exempt category?
So that's if you're two years highly effective in a row. So if you have, if you're post-probationary and two years in a row, you get highly effective, then you get exempt the following year.
And is it just a one-year exemption?
Correct.
Okay.
This is a breakdown of the specific rankings for instructional practices and the professional standards as far as what are the highest and the lowest. Again, you can see like when we look at, we'll pick on school administrators there, their highest score was a 3.57. Average for indicator three, their lowest was a 3.47 for indicator four, still a very high score across the board. But that might be important as we work with our administrators on areas that we want to grow. It's a little bit more individualized. We don't tend to look at a group of, let's say, teachers here and say, well, across the district, our lowest was 3.16, so everybody needs professional development in standard four. That's not necessarily the case, especially when we have very high scores across the board. But it's interesting data to take a look at, just to kind of see where we are and what changes we have and kind of where we average out year by year. So again, overview of the state summative ratings here. You can see statewide, there's a lot of people in education. Percentage-wise, I think we do really well in comparison to the state, specifically in the effective and highly effective area. But you can see statewide that there are very few ineffective and developing across A couple of things here to highlight just from the survey that the state puts together. So all educators have at the end of the school year an opportunity to complete a survey with NDE that is anonymous that just asks some questions. And so we've kind of tracked a few of these questions year by year, and so I will just highlight those for you here. I'm not going to go over, I think there's like 60 questions total. We won't review all of them tonight because we want to get to bed at a decent hour. My evaluation was fair, and this is specifically from the teacher educator voice, so people who identified themselves as teachers on the survey. We have very positive overall. Again, 48.39% strongly agree and 41% agree. So we have very, very small numbers that disagree that their evaluation was fair. And that's a really important indicator. My evaluation was focused more on my professional growth rather than awarding a score or rating. We don't have as high a number of we strongly agree here, but again, overall very positive. And I think this is something that we can take into feedback as an administrative group to say, how can we ensure that we focus these evaluations on professional growth and not worry so much about the score? I will tell you that often the teachers just want to see what the score is, like they don't want to read through all the feedback and whatnot, like where did I place? And that's okay. And that kind of comes with the territory sometimes, but really trying to focus this process on being about growth. We could be highly effective two years in a row, we're exempt, we come back, like how are we going to grow this year? And we're a learning organization and we always want to support learning for, obviously for our students first and foremost, and our staff, as long as we're continuing to learn and grow, we're going to do really good things. My NEPF evaluation cycle experience took a reasonable amount of time. This one's improved quite a bit over the years. I didn't do the year-by-year breakdown, but this is one that four or five years ago, we were leaning more towards disagree and strongly disagree, both from the teacher group, certified staff, and administrators. And we've started to see this shift a little bit more towards being positive, which is a good thing because we don't want this to get in the way of student learning or adult learning. I had access to professional development, formal or informal, that was necessary to implement the feedback and/or directives provided during my NEPF evaluation cycle. Strong, agree, and strongly, excuse me, strongly agree and agree were again the majority, but we start to see that slip a little bit. And making sure that we have educators have access to high-quality professional development that is specific to their needs is something that's very important and something that we take very seriously. But sometimes there's things that everybody needs to get through as well, so it's not always differentiated. I think the NEPF cycle is another opportunity for educators to work together in collaboration to ensure that it meets the needs of the people who are being evaluated. So just a couple of highlights from the survey. Overall, very, very good numbers across the board. I don't think we're measuring these numbers year by year saying, yay, we did an excellent job again this year and we'll worry about it again next year. Like this is an ongoing process. It starts on the first day of school and goes through the school year. And it's just kind of nice to get those numbers on the backend from the state and some validation that we're doing a good job. So congratulations to everybody who's involved in that process and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for providing this data. This is really positive. You guys should use this for your recruitment efforts. Highlight this data. Any questions, comments? Go ahead.
So when it comes to the 15%, you know that they're evaluated for the student's How do we or can we, per statute, adjust the 15% student performance when it is out of the teacher's control because the student doesn't attend school? You know, they're chronically absent. And so if they're not there, obviously they're not going to perform well. Is there any way that that is kind of taken into consideration when it's that 15% of the teacher's?
It is, and I think it's going to get less flexible in the future, to be quite honest with you, looking at the NEPF crystal ball. Going back to this slide here, like it's a collaborative process and it's something that we can adapt and we can make some changes. So that, I'm going to go back to when I was a middle school principal. Often, we'd go through this process, I'm working with a teacher and they've got 22 students and they want to use that entire class period as their control group, if you will, of what they're going to monitor for this specific assessment and growth. So they're focused on their fourth-period class and these are the students we're working with. And then we have one who wasn't there for many of the assessments, and so those growth points are there. We don't just discard that to say, oh, now we've got better data, because if we don't include him, I'm at all or nearly all. Like it's important that all students are represented, but there's a reason why that student's data doesn't look the way we set that goal out to look, you know? And so if the growth, growth goal was to get all students to show that they were, let's go back to the rubric here, that they're showing high growth and high impact, that can look very different from student to student. So again, I'm going to highlight that that's a collaborative conversation. It really needs to be because if you have information showing that a student is currently performing at a level one out of 10, getting them to go to a level six, is that high Could be. Is going from a level five, you know, a five to a six, high growth? Probably not, but it really depends on what parameters you're setting that assessment out, what is the goal and how do you define that in the process? I think high impact also, like there's not a statewide definition for high impact. So I think that's an opportunity for that conversation to take place collaboratively. Like let's define that as we go through the SLG conversation. Well, let's define it together. What is high growth and high impact? And we agree to that so that when we're measuring it, we can be in agreement to strong measurements of high growth and high impact. If a student's absent, you could also make a decision and say, well, because that student, we had no evidence of that student learning, we're going to not include that in the assessment of the SLG. But again, I think that really needs to be collaborative. I mentioned that I think this will be changing because I believe there's going to be conversation about having criterion reference assessments built into the assessment for specific subjects in the future. I know that there's, it's going to look different. So this is where we're at for right now, but.
But you do, the school district does entertain the outlier and not punish the teacher's evaluation for the absenteeism. You do.
That would be best practice, yes. I mean, I will also say that everybody does things a little bit differently. Like if you give every first-grade teacher a curriculum, they're not all going to teach it exactly the same. And I would say the same is true with evaluation frameworks. Evaluators are not going to do it all exactly the same. But I do think we have strong administrators and understanding what are the standards and indicators and how do I need to get evidence of that and really hopefully supporting a collaborative conversation. If we went more in-depth on the survey from NDE, you'll see that the feedback overall is very positive. There's some outliers there where they, it's very negative. So I'd like to learn more about what that experience is from that educator and their evaluation and hopefully if they're feeling that way while they're being evaluated, if they're watching this right now, that they reach out to me individually and communicate that during the process so we can intervene.
Thank you for inviting that. Yeah, I think that is important. Richard?
Two different things. On some of the things, the questions, you have six or seven that indicated I did not participate in the NEPF evaluation cycle. Is that those exempt employees?
Could be. Sometimes, so when I send the link out from NDE, we usually wait till after May 1, when all evaluations are completed, then we send this out. And I, I think sometimes an ESP or classified employee may get the survey and fill it out and they're like, wait a minute, I didn't, they're not evaluated using NEPF. So they may complete this and then indicate it that way. Sometimes it's somebody who's a teacher on special assignment or they're being evaluated using a different tool other than NEPF. Yep.
And the second thing is, it's, I guess, kind of a question. My understanding is that in the near future, the timeframes for the evaluation observations is going to change. It's going to be, what, in the first 30 days, then with 150 and then the last 40 days or something like that?
Yeah, that's what's proposed.
That's going to cause some problems, isn't it?
Yes, it would.
And how are we going to address that?
We're not going to worry about that this year. We'll worry about that confusion next year.
Well, I'd like to think ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm right there with you. Yeah, no, I'm right there with you, but purposely don't want to get into that conversation because I think some things still might change even from what's been presented currently. So yeah, we will find out more and we will over communicate when we do know.
I know there's a lot of concern about that.
Absolutely.
Especially the last 40 days, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? No? Okay, well, thank you so much for this report. This is very informative.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 14, discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy 343, prohibited conduct, employee bullying, harassment, intimidation and discrimination, which includes renumbering the policy to 1040 in section 1000, all staff. And this is for second reading for possible action. Mr. Sadler?
Madam President, members of board, thank you again. Second reading of an update to a policy. Again, going back to our conversations and review, thorough review of policy and regulations with PoolPact, taking recommendations from PoolPact and legal guidance to ensure that we have updates that are accurately represented. So I believe last time there were no changes other than one minor clerical change, but other than that, there were no recommendations for changes.
Comments, questions, concerns? No? Okay. If not, then this is an action item, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and do it then. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve October 14th, 2025 as the revised date for the Policy 343, prohibited conduct, employee bullying, harassment, intimidation and discrimination, which includes renumbering the policy 10.1040 in section 1000, all staff.
Motion by Trustee Werner, second by Trustee Walt. Any board discussions? Any board discussions? See none? Any public comment? See none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I know, I'm sorry. We're getting a little overwhelmed here. All right. Agenda item number 15, discussion and possible action to approve proposal to eliminate CCSD Policy 443, employees harassment, sexual harassment and intimidation due to proposed inclusion of renumbered policy 1040, prohibited conduct, employee bullying, harassment, intimidation and discrimination. And this is a second reading and it's for possible action. Mr. Sadler?
Madam President, members of board, thank you. So with the passing and renumbering of 343 to represent all staff, likewise, Policy 443 becomes obsolete. This was the old version of Policy 443, which represented classified staff, but with the approval of an all staff policy 1040, Policy 443 is obsolete and suggests we eliminate that.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve October 14th, 2025 as the eliminated date for Policy 443, employee harassment, sexual harassment and intimidation.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Peterson and second by Trustee Roberts. Any board discussion? See none? Any public comment? See none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number 16, discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy 225, Drug and Alcohol Free Workplace Program Statement and Policy. And again, this is for second reading for possible action. Mr. Sadler?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. So the last before you this evening for the policies and regulations on my behalf, an important one, drug and alcohol free workplace. There's some updated language here, program statement and policy. You see many changes as far as some things we cleaned up and crossed off. Assuming this is approved, there will be some changes to the regulation and some of the forms that go along with this that I'll bring forward to you in the future. But this is really the starting point to that with this, getting the policy updated. So I believe there were no changes recommended last time.
Comments, questions, motion? I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve October 14th, 2025 as the revised date for Policy 225, Drug and Alcohol Free Workplace Program Statement and Policy.
Second.
Oh, second. Go ahead.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Roberts and second by Trustee Peterson, right? Okay, both of you. Okay. Any board discussion? See none? Any public comment? See none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your patience and for all these items that you've brought Okay. Agenda item number 17, discussion and possible action to approve a revised capital improvement, excuse me, plan for the Carson City School District for fiscal year 2026 to 2030 with no change in the approval budget authority for fiscal year 2526. And this is for possible action. And welcome, Mr. Winward.
Thank you, Madam President. While I'm pulling this up, I don't want to beat a dead horse or kick a tiger while they're down. Can you use animal idioms here? But I was talking with six or seven of my friends and associates about the game before it was going to happen. And it thought it'd be fun if there's some skin in the game, so I'm happy to present this presentation to you in Carson blue. I won't talk about who won, but I like the color scheme here. All righty. And what we have before you is, this is really just a great opportunity that has come up for the district. And as we put our heads together to figure out a way to make this work, this is what we have come up with. So first off, why are we making changes to CIP when we typically only do it during the budget cycle and would do it during December as needed? But we can do it other times. So talk about why we're doing this and then we're going to review the, what the current plan looks like, what the revisions will look like. And then I have just provided an illustration of what it could like and look like in December just for illustration because we're not voting to approve that. It's just an example of what it could be to give you an idea of kind of the full cycle of this change. So the reason why we're doing this is the vendor that we just purchased two special education buses from, got them a couple of weeks ago. They've got three transit buses that are available right away. Another district in the state had ordered them, decided they wanted a different engine configuration, and these became, five of them became available. Two of them were gone before we had an opportunity to act on them. Three are being held till tomorrow. And yeah, it's just a really good thing in talking with a couple of different bus companies, the quickest that they would guarantee that they could have a bus to us if we ordered it today is 18 months from now.
Wow.
So there's just really long lead times. They'd say maybe they could do it faster than that, like 14, 15 months, but they wouldn't make any sort of guarantee. So it just takes a long time to get these things put together, get them configured to follow all of NDOT's Department of Transportation's and Nevada's requirements. These happen to be three that the only thing that it needs is the letters on the outside that say that the district that purchased them. So it's very difficult to budget for purchases that are 18 months out and doesn't really help us with immediate needs that we have with our fleet facing us right now. So that's why we're proposing to revise the CIP plan. And as mentioned, we're not creating any new budget authority. We're just going to rearrange some budget authority because these buses are about, I believe, $252,500 each, so $757, $750 or so is what it would cost to do this. We have that budget authority available in our capital improvement plans. At the beginning of the year, we slated it for some projects that would start to take place at the end of this year. So rather, what we're going to do is rearrange some of that budget authority to move $800,000 to a transportation fleet procurement line item in our CIP, which is a capital improvement plan, to allow for the purchase of these right away. And then when we do the December budget amendment, we can access some of our pay-as-you-go funding. So we have that available to us. We didn't put it in our budget because we didn't foresee anything like this coming up, but as we look at a possible solution to do this, this seemed like the best thing to be able to address our immediate fleet needs and not affect our general fund as well, given its current state. So pay-as-you-go funding is excess debt service funds that can be transferred over to capital projects. That's NRS 350.0020 regulates that. To maintain the amount we need to have in there per statute, we need to have 50% of next year's principal and interest cost of debt service fund in there. After we make this $800,000 transfer, we would still have over 100% in that fund. So we're well within the statutory requirements. I kind of look at that requirement as if you get down to 50%, it's kind of like max on your credit card. We don't want to get there unless we have like a one or two year plan to get out. We're in really good position to be able to use some of these funds to make this purchase. So we were going to rearrange a couple of these projects and, and then we would access this pay-as-you-go funding when we amend the budget in December. Again, what we're voting on tonight is just to amend the CIP plan as presented. And I did provide a handout that shows the CIP as written. That's exhibit one, written in the middle on the top, two pages. Exhibit two is what we proposed to changing the CIP to. And I've got some color coding in there. Anywhere you see a red square, that's where we would be reducing the budget authority for those projects. And you can see what the projects were, amounts originally were in exhibit one. Exhibit two is what we proposed those would be. And that includes the addition at the top of page one, highlighted in green, the transportation fleet procurement of $800,000. As you go to the bottom of page two, highlighted in yellow, you'll see that our total expenditures is still $1,155,000, the same as it was prior to this revision. So we're requesting this change so we can purchase these buses not to exceed $800,000. There's some wiggle room in there in case there's a fee, in case we have a transportation fee or anything that we're, we're not aware of, but we're pretty certain on that $757,000. These buses are already compliant with all of Nevada requirements. One of the things that oftentimes takes a long time is Nevada requires a fire suppression system in buses. Not all states do that, so a lot of times we'll buy a bus and then last minute like, oh, we need to add this. And that literally can add four to six weeks to the production time, as we recently discovered with our special education buses. So we recommend this revision in December. If you go to exhibit three, that just shows an example of what the proposed CIP could look like at our December revision, really just to show that we would be restoring the existing projects we have back to the original budget authority, although as we go through things, those could be funded by a bond fund still. But we're not delaying any projects or canceling any projects. We're just rearranging the budget authority to allow this to happen and fulfill our statutory requirements for budgeting. So again, I kind of mentioned already, NRS requirement is to keep 50% of the current, or I said current year, it's actually next year's principal and interest required payments. That's about $7.7 million for us, give or take. We would have, again, our requirement to have would be half of that, about $3.5 million, $3.6 million. We would have over $7.7 million when this is all said and done. And any questions or comments regarding this proposed change?
Go ahead. Will these be new buses in the fleet or replacement?
When you say newer replacements, like?
So additional, sorry. Are they going to be an added?
They could be additional. We would have some buses that are ready to be retired. These would be used for a lot of our away trips, things longer. A transit bus, if you're not familiar, it's the ones that typically have a flat nose, they have storage compartments underneath seat 84, they're 300 horse, Cummins engine, Allison transmission, just the way Mr. Zabel likes them. And that's how our transit buses have that same configuration of engine transmission. So it's not like we're sacrificing, giving up something to get a deal on those buses. These are exactly what we already operate in our fleet. So our, the buses they'd be replacing, they would either be retired or kicked on down the line and the oldest one, or buses that would be the least serviceable in our fleet would be retired.
What happens to our buses when we retire them?
We can, we have a couple of different places. This actually vendor could, would take them in on trade. They could trade them in. There is not a lot of value left in a bus by the time we're done with it. We could send them to auction. It would be a lot more hassle for approximately the same price. We can take them out back and leave them sitting there for a really long time. Also does not generate a lot of income. Typically, a bus when we're done with it, maybe $5,000 to $10,000 is its residual value. They're fully depreciated by the time where you take them out of service.
Thank you for clarifying that this would not delay any, any projects. That was going to be my concern.
Statutes do allow us to, to give a bus to other school districts or other nonprofit organizations.
So I have a follow up on that. So where you're proposing to move the money from would be asphalt, the roofing, right? Mostly asphalt and re-roofing.
Correct. We have some of those projects and we had some asphalt that we, we budgeted some money in both capital projects, the Fund 300 that's, this is in orange on here. And we also had some of that budgeted for bond. So some of that work is done, but is paid for by bond. That actually advantageous to us given our whole project schedule there. So that would be the bulk of it. And then a roofing project that is not going to be as expensive as we thought it'd be when it comes time to do that this spring.
So there isn't any safety concerns then?
Safety of our buildings?
Yeah. By holding off on any of these?
These would be projects that wouldn't be starting until late this spring and getting ready, late this spring to the start of summer.
Okay. So no safety.
Yeah, we're not Robin Peter to pay Paul by having a leaking roof that we're not taking care of to get a bus.
Asbestos and all of that, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Asbestos, we have that little item that we're, that we move there. More often than not, asbestos management gets rolled into existing projects. But we do keep a small amount there in case we come across something that we need to take care of right away.
I would just say that the opportunity to purchase three buses without having to wait 18 months is worth pursuing and I would support it.
Thank you. It is, it does, it is a very wonderful opportunity to have and not have the lead time we typically would.
So if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the CCSD revised capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2026 to 2030, which includes no changes in the approved budget authority for fiscal year 2025, 2026. No second. Peterson, okay. So motion by Trustee Walt and second by Trustee Peterson. Any board discussion? See none? Any public comment? See none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Winward. All right. Agenda item number 19, presentation on early projections of the CCSD budget for fiscal year 2027, and this is for discussion only. Mr. Sadler?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I don't know if there's any Paul Harvey fans in here, but this is the rest of the story. The rest of the story.
President Ramirez, before Spencer starts. Sorry. I, I just, I just want to point out, so putting together a budget update, like the detail level that goes into it usually takes a couple of months when you're preparing a budget for May or December at least. And in the last one month, he's not only put together the update for this year's budget, but tried to generate entirely budget for the next fiscal year, on top of having dropped on him, hey, we have these buses. How are we going to figure this out? And so I, I just, I was never asked to give a budget update this early after the start of a school year or a projection for the next year. And so it's just a ton of work and I just, just wanted to recognize that.
Yes, we really appreciate that. That's a lot of, a lot of hours that you put into your day, so thank you.
Thank you. I've had some good mentors along the way. All righty. This, you'll see this background here looks very. All righty, this, you'll see this background here looks very similar to our FY26 budget. And what we really wanted to do is, we know a little bit more where it's not a legislative year, there we, we have more known knowns and there are known unknowns, even though there's still plenty of those. But we wanted to give you kind of a first look of what next year would look like if we just carried on how we are. And the reason for that being is to give you as board members the opportunity to help sculpt and guide and consider our strategic plan goals and figure out how we best want to continue forward to meet our fiscal responsibilities as a district and meet the needs of our students and our staff. So again, this is going to be a lot of assumptions into this budget projection. And again, largely, most of what we've considered is our salary and benefits. We've been through and a lot of those things we talked about updating during FY26, we've projected those the best we can for FY27, to kind of look at if we continued staffed exactly how we are, what FY27 would look like. So again, our salary and benefits, I just did some rough math while there were some family life discussions going on, 87% is what our, based on FY20, our FY25 budget, what our salary and benefits are for general fund. So again, for this illustration, we've kept our revenues budgeted flat. So we know that, a term I heard earlier today, $2 Joe is about $19 Joe, maybe a little bit more, I don't know. We know there's the modest increase for the second year. We also know that we're dropping enrollment, so we've elected to keep those two, to let them cancel each other out, keep our revenue the same for next year as we had for this year. As we get closer and we know a little bit more where things are looking, we will certainly update that. But to give you a good idea, we're not counting on tons of dollars coming in, we're losing tons of dollars, it's just staying the same. And then in a vacuum, we know that everything that we purchase services and supplies-wise would cost the same next year as it was this year. We know that's not quite going to be the case, but without trying to guess and extrapolate too much and get too far off the beaten path, we're just going to keep those flat so that we can kind of get an idea of where things would look as we go throughout, so. And for this, keeping the funds transfers to be, we expect they to be very similar to what we have this year. So of course, there might be a couple of changes as we have different salary costs in other funds, but we're keeping them the same for now, so. Again, kind of building off what we did for FY26, if we're looking at a $3.9 million deficit this year, we know that's going to roll into next year if we don't change anything. And then as we've gone through all the salary and benefits to include all our changes that we have, the negotiations, everyone receiving their steps, again, not taking any vacancy savings or anything into account, that would be an additional $1.5 million for next year. And so with that, that would make our deficit, our structural deficit, again, this is different than taxation, we don't put our contingency in there, a couple of other things, that usually is about $1.2 million, but just to keep it similar to what we've been comparing, our structural deficit would be $5.4 million for next year. Any questions about what we've seen so far? Let me look at the left slide. Yes.
Concerns? Yeah, well, yeah. Well, obviously, we're not going to do that, though, right? I mean, obviously, we're going to.
If we all left here saying we were going to do that, I would not sleep very well tonight.
Okay.
I won't sleep very well regardless because of that, but.
Yeah, and so I think that's where, you know, it comes in where I previously stated as well, is with those workshops, I think what's we, once we move from learning everything about all of the different funding mechanisms, you know, the different accounts that we have, we bring it then back to the board and say, okay, where are we going to cut 10%? Where are we going to cut 20%? Where are we going to find these cuts in order to make this not a $5.4 million deficit or deficit spending, so that we're not doing $5.4 million deficit spending? I think that's where we're going to need to come back, and I'm going to look to Richard and say, is that not where you agree?
No, I totally agree, and I think everybody here, the board and everybody in the room, realizes that we cannot sustain a $5.4 million deficit next year, because that would bring us down to about, what, $6 million in our outstanding balance fund, or whatever they call it?
Yeah, our ending fund balance.
Yeah, running.
To answer a previous question, 15.2 million, 19.7 million, so 15.2 the beginning of this year, if everything shook out exactly as budgeted, then that would be 11.3.
And then you take away 5.4 on top of that if this is accurate.
Yeah, that would be.
Then we're down pretty low, right?
A reduction that I don't think would be healthy to go down that low that fast, so.
Because when you start getting in trouble, if I recall correctly, is when you get down to about a 4% ready fund balance, and we don't want to go near there because things happen where we may need to fund them, you know, naturally. So yeah, I mean, I am concerned, and I think it's good that everybody here is committed to working together with the associations to try to reduce this quite a bit. And there again, the main priority would be keeping teachers in the classroom.
Yes, and again, this is a very early projection, this is just to kind of give you a starting point of, and again, as you've seen during our budget cycles, we kind of start here and as we whittle and hone things, we typically can get that down some, but, you know, I think there'll be some structural changes to get the deficit to where you as board members feel comfortable with that.
So I, again, I just, this is a really early estimate, and there's a lot of, I think, fine-tuning detail that still has to happen around this to land at a, kind of a final number that we're running with going into the next year. But the number is substantial, I recognize that. It's not a number that we've seen in a while this big, it's probably been eight years, I think. And the reality is that there, you know, in trying to bring that number down, depending on how far we're looking to reduce it, there can be some significant impacts and changes in how we operate. So I just want everyone to keep that in mind. I, I think it's important to remember that, you know, when we have dealt with this in the past as much as possible, if there was an impact to staffing, that the absolute goal was to kind of through attrition, just not replace positions if possible. And I think for all of you, and I don't expect you to, to give me a, give us a number tonight, but to be thinking about what, what is a reasonable kind of response to this in terms of where, where do we want that number? And I just, I think it's really important to remember that, you know, every year, whether we like it or not, we do have some vacancy savings. Every year, not 100% of our operational budget is spent. So, you know, if you, if you budget a $1 million deficit, it's entirely possible that you end up with a surplus, just because some of those things happen. So to be thinking about what is kind of that number as a board, I think is a, you know, it's not an action item, but just kind of a consensus idea of where do we feel comfortable? And then we can work on putting together scenarios to continue best supporting the students of the district, keep moving things in the right direction.
On that note, and I appreciate that, AJ, on that note, though, I would, so say if we threw out a number, you know, and you tried to achieve that, I would hate to come back and go, well, with that number, this is what we had to do. So like if I said to you 2.4, because isn't that where we were a couple of years ago? It was like a 2.4. It seemed, you know, that seemed pretty reasonable. But with that, we would, I would appreciate to know what got cut.
It's going to be, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Give me an option A or B or C, because if that, I would be going, no, I don't want 2.4, if that means 25 teachers, 18 paraprofessionals, six bus drivers, you know, on that end, yeah.
No, there will absolutely be a level of detail for all of you in these meetings and open meetings, talking about what changes are being suggested and different options. The other thing I want to float out there, and again, not, not taking action tonight, but one of the things that has really, I think, helped us the past two years is the board's willingness to offer some type of incentive for notification when staff are deciding to leave or retire from the district, but potentially consider doing something even earlier in the school year. That, I think that would be immensely helpful in trying to plot out the course to do this. So just want to throw that out there so that is on your radar and just something to be thinking about if we would, as we're discussing this, just thinking about how to proceed and do it kind of as thoughtfully as, as we can through this process.
Well, what I'd like to point out to the people who may be listening is the Carson City School District, we run pretty lean on staff, admin staff and everything. I recently found out that there's one high school in Las Vegas that's the same size or similar size to Carson High, and they have five vice principals at that school. And so we run a lot leaner than a lot of the districts, and so that's what makes it even more painful, because there's not a lot of fat.
Yeah, that's definitely a big concern, but like you, like you was already said, you know, working together, hopefully, we will come to a, a way that we can do some savings, you know, that we can come up with some savings, so. Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you very much for all this work.
You are very welcome, and we certainly appreciate the input from, from the board and community members, and, you know, it will take a good concerted effort to, to come up with the best ideas.
Yeah.
So we appreciate all that input.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for meeting all our expectations here. We were, we asked you for too many things this, this time, so I'm sorry that we've had you work so hard. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 20, Approval of Consent Agenda, and this is for possible action. I think everyone's getting tired. You got moved?
In second.
Second, okay. So motion by Trustee Walt and second by Trustee Partner, any board discussion? See none, any public comment? See none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 21, Informational Items, and this is for discussion only, no action will be taken. Any comments? Okay.
If you're looking for comments, I do have one.
Go ahead.
I'd like to tell Superintendent Fuehlman that I really appreciated your board report tonight, where you took the time to recognize the people you recognized. I think that's very important, and I really appreciated that.
Yeah, definitely. Agenda item number 22, Request for Future Agenda Topics. Budget workshop? Budget workshop? Yep. And anybody else? No? Agenda item number 22, 23, a German. Thank you so much, everyone. That was a long meeting.